Animation studio expansion at 1200 Park Avenue. And before we actually begin the agenda item, we've announced this earlier. We are asking that you please fill out a speaker card, legibly. They're available up here near the podium. We ask that you fill it out and turn it in to Charlie to the left side of the podium. And Charlie will then forward the cards to me. And I will read off a set of names and ask that those wishing to address the commission line up in order and then address the commission. We are first going to hear from staff and then have a presentation from Pixar and allow the commission to ask questions of staff and the applicant. And then we will open the public hearing and everyone will have an opportunity to speak. You can see by the size of the crowd, the importance of this item and the need to be as efficient as possible. So we're going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And if someone has already presented your concerns, we would like you to understand that they are, they have been heard by the commission and encourage you not necessarily to simply speak up again and reiterate comments that have already been expressed. With that, I think John Flores, the city manager, actually.
Michael did.
Mike Biddle. The city attorney actually wants to make a few comments.
Good evening, commissioners. And for everybody here who doesn't know who I am, my name is Mike Biddle. I'm the city attorney for the city of Emeryville. And in that capacity, I also serve as the general counsel for the redevelopment agency. I provided to you at the, before the meeting started, a copy of a letter dated of today's date that is addressed to the firm of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger. I previously gave a copy to the court reporter as I would like the letter to be included in the record. There are additional copies of the letter that are here. I have previously faxed a copy to Shute, Mahaly this afternoon, and it was addressed specifically to Alan Garber and Robert Pearlmutter. The letter provides and sets forth that the city is strongly objecting to the involvement of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger in these proceedings, and in particular their representation of the East Bay Alliance for Sustainable Economy, also known as E-BASE. It's the city's view that their representation of E-BASE is a clear violation of the California Rules of Professional Conduct, in particular Rule 3-310, and it is a rule governing their professional responsibility as lawyers. Accordingly, the city is demanding that Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger refrain from further representation of E-BASE in the pending proceeding before you tonight involving the proposed Pixar expansion project, as well as any other matter which is antagonistic to the city and the redevelopment agency. The city is further demanding that Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger affirmatively withdraw their April 8, 2004, letter and all the attachments and exhibits thereto, which is part of your packet. And we ask that they withdraw it from the administrative record in the proceedings that are before you tonight. Give you a little bit of the background and the basis of our objection. On July 12, 2001, the city of Emeryville through the city attorney's office retained the firm of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger relative to matters involving Technikem, which is located at 4245 Hallock Street in Emeryville. And we entered into a professional services agreement of that date. Section 5A of that agreement provides that the city shall have the right to terminate the agreement for any reason by providing written notice at least five calendar days in advance of the termination date. There's no provision that allows Shute, Mahaly to terminate the agreement. The city has never provided Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger any such written notice of termination. The agreement remains in effect. As we were finalizing the terms of that agreement in July of 2001, we also worked together to finalize the city's appeal, which was filed on July 6, 2001. And it was appeal filed with the Department of Toxic Substance Control relative to DTSC's decision to issue a final standardized permit to Technikem. The city's appeal has since languished with DTSC's permitting section for quite some time. And in part, the reason that it languished was that DTSC's enforcement section, two different sections of DTSC, that their enforcement section was pursuing litigation against Technikem for violation of a previous partial consent decree and order that DTSC and Technikem had entered into. Regardless of the fact that this matter had languished for some time, the city was and remains committed to resolving the issues with Technikem. And at that time, had DTSC rejected the city's appeal, we were prepared to move forward and appeal that decision to an appropriate court. Nevertheless, as it turned out, just recently on December 17, 2003, DTSC and Technikem entered into a stipulated judgment that was entered in Alameda County Superior Court, which settled the enforcement action that, which had delayed DTSC's action on the city's appeal. The stipulated judgment that was recently entered into provided that Technikem would close its recycling facility effective December 31, 2003, and then further undertake hazardous materials cleanup activities under DTSC's oversight. My office, with the ongoing assistance of Renee Vandergreen of Environ, an environmental consulting firm, which has, Ms. Vandergreen was retained by the city back in 2001, with her assistance, we continue to interact with DTSC relative to the cleanup activities to be undertaken by Technikem in order to ensure that there's protection of public health and safety. Additionally, we have been made aware, the city has, that Technikem now proposes to continue operating a transfer facility at that location. It is something that we, at a staff level, believe is outside the scope of their conditional use permit that was issued back in 1987. Accordingly, this saga involving Technikem is clearly far from over. And we will certainly see more of this either before the commission or the council in the Thus, the city does have a continued need for outside counsel in the Technikem matter. We have the services of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger under contract already relative to that matter. And in light of a recent Court of Appeal decision in the matter of Nightlife Partners Limited versus the city of Beverly Hills, a case which impacts the ability of a city attorney's office to both prosecute a matter as well as to advise the body hearing the matter that's being prosecuted, it necessarily requires the assistance of outside counsel. So with this matter pending on Technikem, on July 31, 2003, the city received a public records act request regarding the proposed Pixar expansion project from Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger, a letter authored by Mr. Pearlmutter on behalf of E-BASE. The letter, in addition to requesting documents, asserted at that time that the city and agency, quote, "seem intent on approving the project without adequately addressing, analyzing, or mitigating its impacts on the city's residents and the environment." Essentially, the letter is accusing the city of acting in violation of SEQA even though the environmental review process hadn't even been begun, it's just getting underway, and nothing had been circulated for public review. This letter, we believe, is patently adverse to the interests of the city and the agency. On August 12, 2003, the city, we notified Shute, Mahaly of our objection to their concurrent representation of E-BASE, to which they haven't responded. Thus thereafter, on April 8, 2004, during the comment period on the initial study mitigated negative declaration, the city received a letter from Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger purporting to represent E-BASE on matters relating to the environmental review for this project. The letter, as you may have read, concludes that the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the proposed Pixar project is legally inadequate, that it does not provide the analysis required by SEQA, and that an EIR should be prepared. This letter is, again, adverse to the interests of the city and the agency. So the city, again, hereby renews its objection to their concurrent representation of adverse clients. With that background in mind, you need, the city has asked Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger to review the California Rules of Professional Conduct, Rule 3-310, and the numerous cases interpreting the rule. The review of these cases shows that the standards have evolved for conflicts arising out of simultaneous representation of clients with potentially adverse interest and for conflicts arising out of successive representation of clients with adverse interests. Where the representation is successive, that being when an attorney is engaged to represent the interests of a party that are adverse to a former client of the attorney's, the chief fiduciary value jeopardizes that of confidentiality. But when the potentially conflicting parties are simultaneously represented by the same attorney, the primary value at stake is attorney's duty and the client's, in this case, the city's legitimate expectation of loyalty rather than confidentiality. There are two duties, the duty of confidentiality and the duty of loyalty. And in the city's position that in this particular instance, we are dealing with both such duties. The California Supreme Court has found that where the duty of loyalty applies, it requires a per se or automatic disqualification in all but a few instances which do not apply in this instance. And the reason should be evidently clear to them. A client who learns that his or her attorney is representing an adversary in litigation, even with respect to a matter that is unrelated to the one for which they were retained, how can you expect there to sustain this level of confidence and trust in the counsel that you hired? So it is for this reason and others that the courts and ethical codes alike prohibit an attorney from simultaneously representing two client adversaries even where the substance of the representation is unrelated. Accordingly, it is the city's position that even though the Technikem matter languished for some time, the record is clear that, one, Technikem matter remains an ongoing matter of concern to the city; two, the city has not terminated the agreement with Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger; three, Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger has not nor has it attempted to withdraw a special counsel to the city of Emeryville; and four, there is no written consent executed by the city which would permit the conflicting representation of E-BASE, even assuming if Shute, Mahaly attempted to withdraw from representation of the city on the basis that it was a long dormant matter, that Technikem was dormant. The Supreme Court noted in the flat decision that so inviolate is the duty of loyalty to an existing client that even by withdrawing from the relationship, an attorney cannot evade it. So it is our position, the city's position, that we request and reaffirm our demand that Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger refrain from representing E-BASE in this proceeding or other, any other proceeding adverse to the city. And we demand that Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger withdraw their comment letter of April 4th as well as all their attachments and exhibits. If they fail to comply with the request of the city, the city wants it on the record that we are reserving our right to seek full redress of our legal and equitable rights under the agreement and as provided by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we're going to hear from the city manager, John Flores. John?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the planning commission. Again, for the record, I'm John Flores, city manager and executive director of the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Thank you very much for allowing me time at the beginning of this meeting to make some brief comments. The proposed Pixar Animation Studios' expansion project is a major and significant project for the city of Emeryville, but also for the region and for the community. In these times when the economy, especially the Bay Area, is doing quite poorly, the proposed project, I believe, will bring a much needed employment to the area, including Emeryville and the surrounding area. There will be all levels of jobs that will be available if this project moves forward and Pixar completes it. The project with the addition of buildings on their site will better meet the city's vision, really, for providing a more dense, vibrant urban city, something that we have been trying to do for a number of years. And of course, the additional buildings will provide increased property taxes, which will out funding really because it's in a redevelopment area for affordable housing in this city. And I don't need to go into it now, and I'm sure you will later, that the city of Emeryville really is superior in providing housing and affordable housing in this area. I want to say that through the negotiated agreements that we have done with the city and agency and Pixar, Pixar will be required to provide a number of benefits to the community, including monies for capital improvements and municipal services that will allow the city to continue to provide the superior police, fire, and community services that it has provided in the past. And Pixar will also be required to pay into a facilities impact fee for the school district, Emery Unified School District. I don't think I need to say that Emery, or Pixar is a growing and exciting business, so is Emeryville. And this project will allow them to expand and to keep their headquarters in the city of Emeryville. That's important because Pixar has been, and we expect them to continue to be, a major benefactor to the Emeryville community, supporting schools, local nonprofits, and regional-serving Emeryville Center of Community Life, which we're working on. I want to recognize at the beginning the work of staff in preparing a comprehensive document that is before you, and it balances, I believe, the needs of the city with those of Pixar. It's not easy to do, and it ensures the continuation of benefits for the community. I believe that. And I wholeheartedly support staff recommendation to the planning commission that they review and approve the Pixar Animation Studios' expansion project. With that, I'll turn it over to Charlie Bryant, planning director.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'm going to give a brief overview for the benefit of the audience and those watching on TV and the commission as well, of both the process that Pixar needs to go through to get their approvals, so that everybody's clear on why we're here tonight and what we're doing and what comes next. And secondly, I'm just going to give a brief outline for the meeting tonight, how the meeting tonight is going to proceed. So first, with regard to the process, Pixar is what's called a planned unit development or a PUD. PUDs are typically done for large integrated developments on large sites that are often developed over a period of time in phases, generally subject to some kind of master planning. Other PUDs in Emeryville include Chiron, the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, the Bay Street Project, the Watergate Office Complex out on the peninsula. A PUD is done in two steps. The first step is what's called a PDP, preliminary development plan. That is the master plan for the whole project. Then that's followed by what are called FDPs, final development plans. And those are more specific designs for the individual phases of the development of the project. PDPs are required to be reviewed by the planning commission, and then they go to the city council for approval. A PDP or a PUD is rezoning. It's a rezoning of the site, the new zoning of the site becomes that PUD, and the PDP provides the rules that that site must then develop under. In Pixar's case, a PDP was approved in 1998. They are now proposing to expand beyond what that original PDP approved. The site is now larger than it was originally approved for, and the number of buildings is larger than was originally approved for. And our staff will go into more detail on that, and Pixar will also in their presentation. But basically, they are here to seek a revision of their previously approved PDP so that they can expand their project. They are also simultaneously requesting an FDP, a final development plan approval, for their second building, which will be across the street over here at the corner of Park and Hollis. FDPs currently do not require planning commission review. They only require city council approval. Since Pixar has submitted the FDP concurrent with the PDP, we are showing it to the planning commission tonight as an informational item so that the planning commission can comment on it. There is actually a whole list of approvals that are required in addition to amending the PDP. The PDP is the driver of the whole thing. But the other things that are required are, first of all, as I'm sure many of you know, an environmental document was prepared for this project called a mitigated negative declaration. Before acting on this, both the planning commission and the city council must first approve the mitigated negative declaration. Then they also need to amend the general plan to change the land use designation and the building intensity designation for part of the site, and to eliminate Emery Street as a local street on the general plan circulation drawing, and to relocate a bike route that would run through the site from the general plan circulation drawing. Secondly, they need a vacation of the Emery Street right-of-way. Emery Street is a street that was never built, but the right-of-way is there between Park Avenue and 45th Street. That right-of-way needs to be vacated. Thirdly, the existing bicycle and pedestrian plan, which is not part of the general plan, but it mirrors the general plan, needs to also be amended to relocate that bike route. Fourth, the PDP itself needs to be amended, and as I said, that is a rezoning of the site. Fifth, the Pixar is seeking what's called a development agreement, which is what Mr. Flores described, part of what, he described part of it, and the city attorney will describe it in more detail, that stipulates the agreement that the city and Pixar hope to enter into the terms of the future development of the site. And there is a companion agreement to that, which is called a participation agreement, and that is between Pixar and the redevelopment agency. Next, as I said, there is a final development plan proposed. That, as I said, is being given to the commission tonight for information only, and it will then go on to the city council with the commission's comments. And finally, a tentative subdivision map is also required, and that will also be reviewed by the commission and passed on to the council for approval. In addition to all of those things, the redevelopment agency, as I already mentioned, also needs to enter into this participation agreement. So that's kind of a long list of various approvals that Pixar needs. The first step is to get the planning commission's review and approval of all of those things. Then if, excuse me, right. And then if that occurs, that is passed on to the city council and redevelopment agency as a recommendation that they act, and that will happen subsequently. So that's sort of the big picture of why we're here and what we're doing. Secondly, just with regard to tonight's meeting and how we've planned for it to proceed, following my explanation here, senior planner Deborah Diamond, to my left, will be making a staff presentation on staff's analysis of the project and the issues that staff has identified. Next, Assistant City Attorney Carol Victor, to my right, will explain the provisions of the development agreement. Then our environmental consultants, LSA, will make a brief presentation on the mitigated negative declaration. And I should note that each of these staff and consultant presentations will be followed by questions and answers from the commission, if there are any. Then Pixar will make a presentation of their proposal. Following Pixar's presentation, the public hearing will be opened. And as Chair Martin already indicated, speakers will be limited to three minutes, and you need to submit a speaker's card, which I will pass on to Mr. Martin, and he will then read your name, and you can come to the dials when he reads your name. Following the public hearing, when everyone has spoken who wishes to speak, staff and, I'm sorry, our environmental consultants will come back, LSA and Fair and Peers, our traffic consultants, will come back and provide responses to the comments that have been received on the environmental documents, specifically from E-BASE and Shute, Mahaly. Then staff and the consultants and Pixar will respond to any outstanding questions or issues that may have come up during the public comments. Next, the council, the planning commission, excuse me, will deliberate. They will discuss the project. And finally, the commission will take a vote. So that's the script. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Any questions, Charlie?
All right. If we're all clear on why we're here and what we're doing, I'll turn it over to Deborah Diamond, who will make our staff presentation.
As Deborah gets ready, I'd like to remind everyone here, if you intend to speak to the commission, please pick up a speaker card next to the podium, fill out your, legibly fill out your name and address, and then give it to Charlie, and he'll bring it up to me. And in the interest of time, again, we're going to ask people, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And Charlie will let you know when you've reached that three-minute mark.
Bring out the hook.
Deborah?
You need, the wireless mic is there too. Good evening. Is this working?
I'm not sure. He contends, yes, we hear it is working. Just speak right into it.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Deborah Diamond. I'm a senior planner with the planning and building department here. And my role tonight will be to walk you through the background and the various features of the proposed Pixar expansion plan. The project is located, as we know, across the street. It's a 21-acre property bordered by 45th Street to the north, the commercial properties along San Pablo Avenue to the east, Park Avenue to the south, and Hollis Street to the west. There is currently a planned unit development, or PUD, approval on the site, and it includes the existing Pixar headquarters building and associated landscaping areas and parking And this was, these were built as part of Phase 1 of the original Pixar PDP, or Preliminary Development Plan. This original PDP and associated entitlements were approved by the city council in 1998. And the original PDP permits two phases of development, with both phases secured by a combined development agreement and participation agreement with the city and the redevelopment agency. Phase 1, which Phase One, which consists of the existing 218,000-square-foot building located in the ... More or less in the center of the site. Parking and landscape areas was completed in the year 2000. Phase Two was also approved under the original PDP, and that would permit construction up to 2,000-square-foot building within the southwest portion of the site. A deck over the existing parking service, surface parking over here on the east side was also approved to provide parking for the Phase Two building. And Phase Two building has not yet been developed. Since the 1998 approvals, the project applicant has acquired two additional properties. One is the Castle property in the eastern portion of the site, which is here on this diagram, and also what we're calling the Hollis Street property, which is on the corner of Hollis and 45th, in the northwest corner of the site. As shown in this diagram, the project site is comprised of five properties. They include the Hollis Street site, and this is a small property currently owned by the Redevelopment Agency, which was a former rail spur, a small site. The Pixar campus as it exists. The extension of Emery Street through this portion of the site, and then the Castle property. So with the physical expansion of the site, the applicant is proposing a master plan with three additional buildings and a parking garage on the campus. The proposed project would consist of two additional phases of construction to accommodate current and projected growth in addition to the construction of a modified Phase Two. And we'll note that Phase Two of the project is currently entitled, but is now proposed to involve a smaller building and expanded surface parking to the east rather than a parking deck. Phases Three and Four were not entitled, and the applicant is proposing also to subdivide the property with the result of each building occupying its own parcel. So the PDP describes several phases of development. And the first one would be the Phase Two, which would be modified from the initial Phase Two that was approved back in 98. This would consist of the construction of a two-story building with a partial basement, and again, on the south and west portion of the site. And at the time of writing the staff report, it was the PDP envisioned this to be up to 145,000 square feet. The final development plan, which is also being viewed tonight, indicates that that building will be actually 108,000 square feet, modified, to be smaller. So to accommodate the increased demand for parking, the second phase would include expansion of the existing parking lot to the east. And that would be to expand it over the Emery Street right-of-way and portion of the Castle property. The ... In addition to that, the applicant would provide two public amenities. One is a seven-and-a-half-foot-wide landscape area along the Hollis Street frontage for public use. That would be along here. And an approximate 40-foot-wide linear park with a bicycle and pedestrian path on the eastern portion of the site, which would go through here. And we'll talk a little bit more about that a little later. So here is a drawing of the ... An image of the Phase Two development. And as you can see, it shows the Phase Two building here. The existing Hollis Street building continued here. Same landscaping as existing. Expanded parking to the east. And then we have the 40-foot linear park with the bike path at the far east of the site. For Phase Two, two separate development options are proposed. The choice of which alternative to implement will be based on the size and configuration deemed appropriate by Pixar at the time of development. And here is what we call Option One of Phase Two. This is one alternative. And that would consist of the construction of a 180,000-square-foot, two-story office building with a basement in the southeast corner, and would require the removal of the surface parking in that location, and the construction of a maximum six-story or seven-level parking garage fronting on the 45th Street directly to the north of that Option One building. The parking garage would contain up to 1,800 parking spaces and may be constructed partially during Phase Three and partially during Phase Four. The phasing of the parking garage would be tailored to meet the city requirements and projected employee and visitor demand as the campus grows. And ultimately, the garage would provide all required parking at the build-out of the campus.
Deborah, if you can talk a little slower so the court reporter can catch up with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely.
Louder, too.
And this diagram shows Option Two of Phase Three. This is another alternative. And this would consist of the construction of a two-story with basement, or three-story office building comprised of approximately 200,000 square feet in the northwest corner of the project site. And the construction of this building would require the demolition of the existing one-story brick building on the Hollis property. At the northeast corner of the site, a parking garage, as described under Option One, would be constructed. And in addition, Option Two would include the removal of surface parking in the southeastern portion of the site, which would be the Option One building site. And of course, the installation of landscaping, including turf and trees. Phase Four would consist of a full build-out of the site. And it would include the building that would not have been built during Phase Three, and the completion of the parking garage. In terms of timeline, Phase Two construction is expected to be completed by 2008. Phase Three construction is anticipated to begin around 2013 and be completed by 2016. And Phase Four would begin approximately 2021 and be completed by 2024. So you can see it's a long-range development plan. I want to talk a little bit about the design and the landscaping. And I can leave this here for now. The future landscaping would be similar to the existing open spaces on the campus. All pedestrian pathways and roads would be paved with impervious surfaces and open space areas, and would be planted with trees, grass, and flowering plants. And then the black metal perimeter fencing, as existing, will continue to surround the campus. We'll talk a little bit about the Hollis Street frontage. We discussed the pedestrian amenity proposed along Hollis Street. And so in addition to the interior landscaping, this seven-and-a-half-foot setback area would be landscaped with ... And would provide benches for public use. It would be created by moving the perimeter fencing, which is currently at two-and-a-half feet from the property line, back so that it is at seven-and-a-half feet from the property line. And then also, the Emery Street right-of-way and pedestrian bike path. The Emery Street right-of-way between Park Avenue and 45th Street, which is the extension of Emery here, is currently unimproved. And the master plan would include the vacation of this block of Emery Street, which would result in the necessity to reroute the Class Two bike route, which is planned for that section of Emery Street. So an area of equivalent size to the right-of-way would be dedicated as a 40-foot-wide linear park at the eastern edge of the site. And this would be right adjacent to the promenade shopping area where Long's is right here. And this area would be ... Would include a bike and pedestrian trail designed as a Class One bike path and pedestrian amenities and landscaping. The area would be deeded to the city. The project applicant would construct and pay for all the initial construction and landscaping. And the city would be responsible for continued maintenance. So as far as vehicular and pedestrian access to the Pixar campus, ingress and egress would continue to be through the existing Park Avenue gate during all phases of construction. In Phases Three and Four, vehicles would exit the parking structure via the main driveway and the 45th Street gate here. Ingress via the 45th Street gate would occur only during special events. And there are currently five locations for pedestrian access to the campus. New gates for employee pedestrian access would be provided, too, during Phase Two. And additional pedestrian access gates may be provided during Phases Three and Four as well. Off-site circulation improvements will include curbs and gutters and sidewalks, replacement of those adjacent to the Hollis Street and the Castle properties where applicable. And striping and bike route signage and bollards will be needed. Also, the project applicant will fund installation of stop signs on Park Avenue at Watts Street, and contribute to future signalization at the Park Avenue and Horton Street intersection. I'd like to note that while the staff report indicates that the curb extensions, or as we call them, bulleits, would be provided on both sides of Park Avenue at the various intersections, Pixar instead has proposed to pay the city $50,000 as an in-luck fee for pedestrian safety improvements. And so staff is recommending that the ... One of the conditions of approval be amended accordingly. And that would be Condition Four A in Section Two, Subsection A. Any ... There would be utility connections. New utilities would be installed to serve the new facilities within the project site as they are developed. And staff would like to note, correction to page 103 of the mitigated negative declaration, that due to capacity constraints, the Phase Three Option Two building will connect to the sanitary sewer that runs along Park Avenue, not to the sewer on 45th Street, as indicated in the MND. Also, the existing 10-foot-wide easement in the Emery Street right-of-way includes utility easement with electrical and telephone utility lines. And those would need to be rerouted to the east, to the linear park property that would be deeded to the city. So Mr. Bryant has reviewed the entitlements to achieve the master plan. And I'd just like to go through quickly some of the specific amendments that would be required for the city documents. As Mr. Bryant noted, there were a number of general plan amendments. Currently, the general plan map, which is part of the general plan, the land use diagram, designates the project site, which is shown in this bold square, which is basically what we've referred to as the Hollis Street property, for industrial use. The Pixar campus is proposing mostly office use, which falls into a commercial category. And therefore, an amendment to change this Hollis Street property from industrial to commercial would be required. Also, as part of the general plan, there's a building intensity map that indicates the building intensities envisioned throughout the city in terms of their floor area ratio, or FAR. The Hollis Street property, again, is designated as a .7 floor area ratio and would need to be amended to the 1.4 FAR to be consistent with the rest of the campus. The circulation map ... I'm sorry. The circulation map of the general plan designates the Emery Street right-of-way between Park Avenue and 45th Street as a local street on the general plan circulation map. In order to vacate this portion of Emery Street, it would have to be eliminated from the circulation plan. And in addition, the circulation plan was previously amended to designate this segment of Emery Street right-of-way as a pedestrian bicycle route. And so Pixar is requesting that the pedestrian bicycle route be relocated to the proposed linear park. And so those are the amendments to the general plan. Also required would be an amendment to the bicycle and pedestrian plan. And this indicates Figure Three of the bikeway network, and indicates the bike ped plan continuing along Emery Street. This segment would have to be moved further east and changed from a Class Two bike lane to a Class One path, as proposed. Part of the approval of a revised Preliminary Development Plan would include some zone changes. So the existing PDP must be amended to expand the side area to include the Emery Street right-of-way, the Castle property, and the Hollis properties, including the rail spur. These amendments would include rezoning of the Hollis property from light industrial, again, the Hollis property, from light industrial to Planned Unit Development consistent with the rest of the campus. And also, PUD designation is existing on the Castle property as well as the Emery Street right-of-way. And also related to zoning changes is the building height map. The Hollis property is designated 40 feet, and the proposal is to redesignate it to PUD. Now, just a little bit about the Castle property. It was subject to ... Originally subject to an FDP for residential development. And this was approved by the City Council. And this final ... Its final development plan provided for the development of 102 residential units, including 20 moderate-income units in conjunction with and west of the Promenade Retail Center on San Pablo Avenue. However, unlike the retail portion, the residential piece was never constructed. Pixar since has acquired the property from the previous developer. And as part of the acquisition of the Castle property, the participation agreement with the prior developer was terminated by the Redevelopment Agency. The conditions of approval to that FDP provided that it shall become void if the participation agreement is terminated. So accordingly, the final development plan associated with the Castle property was voided by operation of law at the time that the participation agreement was terminated. And that was in October of 2002. I mentioned earlier that among the approvals are a tentative map and a final map to subdivide the property. Pixar has applied for a tentative subdivision map. And that would divide the expanded property into seven parcels, one for each structure proposed for Phases One through Four, plus one each for the parking garage, the bicycle path, and the central landscaped area. each for the parking garage, the bicycle path, and the central landscaped area. The approval of a tentative map is required by the State Subdivision Map Act and the city's subdivision and parcel map law for all subdivisions that create five or more As Mr. Bryant mentioned, the final development for Phase 2 is being presented and will go to the City Council as part of the master plan approvals. So, it's also, the FDP for Phase 2 is also being considered at this time, but pursuant to the zoning regulations, action on the final development plans are the purview of the City Council, and staff is providing the Planning Commission with copies of the plans for information and comment only. And I don't want to spend too much time going through the FDP plans, but we'll just look at them briefly. So, they, the purpose of the FDP is to provide more specific characterization, and so this phase would show the creation of a new building in the southwest portion and the extension of the parking to the east, the linear park, and the improvement and setback of the seven-and-a-half-foot margin on the Hollis Street side. I'll just flip through and look at some of the elevations as well. It's basically a two-story building with a very small partial basement. This would be the Hollis Street side, and this is the east side. It's mostly clad in brick with large inset windows and with a glass atrium covering the entire east side, and this would be open floor-to-ceiling. And this is the south side elevation, basically what we would see from this building. Here's the east elevation of the glass atrium, and then the west side. Here's a little bit more detail on the linear path along the eastern portion of the site. Again, here's Long's, and this is the expanded parking with the pedestrian bike route going through here, approximately 10-foot-wide path with landscaping and a small plaza and some benches and other amenities as well. So, staff has identified a number of issues that the Planning Commission may wish to consider at this time, and the commission may also identify other issues that have not been covered in the staff report. We thought that building and site design would be something that the commission would care to discuss. The proposed office research and development buildings would be two to three stories. They would be arranged around a landscape quadrangle at the southern portion of the site, and except for the Phase 2 portion shown here, the architectural details are not available at this time for the remainder of the site. It's the kind of general conceptual review that you have for the preliminary development So, this campus-style development pattern is reflected in the preliminary development plans, and the visual link to the surrounding brick buildings and the low-rise industrial buildings that surround the site, which, that visual link is prescribed by the general plan, that would need to be achieved through more detailed architectural and landscape designs submitted as part of the final development plans for each phase. The FDP for Phase 2 building appears to be consistent in terms of its materials and scale to the surrounding context. The parking structure is proposed to be five to six stories and ranging in height from 50 to 60 feet, and would be taller than most buildings in the vicinity and visually prominent, especially on 45th Street and San Pablo Avenue. So, to address any potential negative impacts on the visual quality, a mitigation measure has been established to prescribe certain design guidelines, and those would be that the structures be adequately referenced and visually compatible with surrounding historic brick buildings. Examples of such reference to surrounding brick buildings would include, but not be limited to, brick facings, deeply recessed windows, arched lintels, mullions, symmetry, and windows proportional to the building mass. For the garage, the bulk of the garage should be minimized by divided into separate building masses with varied setbacks, heights, designs, and materials. The garage must be compatible with the design of the other buildings on campus and must be screened with installation of trees to minimize the visual impact on 45th Street and San Pablo Avenue. And the upper levels of the garage shall be set back one foot on all sides for every foot that the building exceeds the height of the existing, the existing Phase 1 building that's existing on the site now. A couple other mitigations regarding the elimination of glare by shielding lighting and also that parked cars would not be visible from the surroundings. It should be noted that the setback of the upper levels of the garage may be reduced, may reduce the amount of parking space available, so when it exceeds the height of the existing Phase 1 building, setback is a requirement, is a requirement, and therefore, that may reduce the parking that can be provided, so therefore, an additional garage level may be needed.
Deborah, can I ask, what is the height of the Phase 1 building? It's not specified in the initial study. Is it 40 feet?
I don't know. I'll have to look that up.
Thank you.
Forty feet, thank you. Another issue that staff would like to bring up is the loss of the 4240 Hollis Street building. This is the brick building that houses a number of businesses, including Semifreddies and Bisco's. The Pixar expansion would result in the demolition of this building and replacement with a new building, which would be set back from the street, and so to ameliorate the loss of the character provided by this brick building, the project would provide this public amenity of the seven-and-a-half-foot setback with landscaping and benches along the Hollis Street frontage. Transportation impact analysis was prepared for the project by Farr and Pierce Transportation Consultants, and the study analyzed the project's potential impacts on 24 intersections for morning and evening peak hour operations. The analysis included eight different scenarios of development from existing levels to full build-out at year 2024, and it concluded that the traffic associated with the Pixar expansion project would result in significant off-site impacts at the Park Avenue-Horton Street intersection for the 2025, year 2025 scenarios. However, that intersection is predicted to operate at a deficient service level prior to the addition of the Pixar project traffic. Thus, Pixar would be required to contribute its fair share to intersection signalization, and that would be in addition to its contribution to the city's traffic impact fee program. The traffic analysis also addressed pedestrian bicycle and traffic impacts and provides recommendations for mitigations to those as well. Another issue that we wanted to bring up was the concept of loss of housing. Although the revised master plan would not specifically displace existing housing, it would preclude the development of future housing on the Castle property, and as we discussed, the approved FDP on the Castle property, which has since been voided, provided for 102 residential units that were never built. New legislation requires that the city make certain findings prior to reducing any residential densities, and this is discussed specifically in the mitigated negative declaration. But because residential project, the residential project on the Castle property is one of the approved housing projects identified in the city's housing element, that particular new legislation would apply, and as discussed in more detail in the MND, even with the loss of opportunity to build housing on the Castle property, the housing element identifies adequate other sites to accommodate and even exceed the city's share of the regional housing need. So, the Planning Commission and City Council may easily make the finding required. Another issue that staff would like to bring up is the loss of the Emery Street connection. The promenade project would have constructed Emery Street between Park Avenue and 45th, resulting in a direct connection from 45th Street to Peralta Street at West MacArthur Pixar's expansion would mean that this connection would not be built, and if Emery Street were improved, the city would terminate at 45th Street, and according to the traffic consultants, Emery Street would not be a viable north-south alternative to San Pablo Avenue, and for this reason, the vacation of Emery Street is not considered a significant project-related impact. And we have discussed the shifting of the Class 2 bike route to a Class 1 facility moved further east. Another issue that staff would like to address, is the final one, would be public access to the Pixar campus and/or its open space. And there has been discussion about Pixar's private park and how desirable it would be if it was open to the public. Although Pixar allows the public to see into its campus and provides tours by appointment for Emoryville schoolchildren and others, Pixar is also working with the city's recreation department to develop additional programs for youth. Nonetheless, it would be a benefit to the city if the revised master plan could incorporate ways of making the campus more accessible and more integrated into the surrounding urban fabric. And the city staff has worked with Pixar, and the applicant has expressed apprehension about such measures, citing the need for security. And while the applicant is unwilling to provide greater access to the campus, they have agreed to provide a seven-and-a-half-foot strip along Hollis Street and the 40-foot-wide linear park on the eastern edge. So, in conclusion, staff has worked closely with the applicant to address the development issues discussed above. It is recommended that the Planning Commission, after holding the public hearing on this item, recommend that the City Council adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and it is further recommended that the commission recommend City Council approval of the actions necessary to implement the revised Pixar master plan, including the general plan amendment, amendment to the bike and pedestrian plan, modification of the PDP, the amendments to the development agreement and participation agreement, vacation of a portion of Emery Street, and the tentative subdivision map. The Planning Commission may also provide comments to the City Council on the final development plan. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah, and I think that Carol Victor, you were going to address the commission?
Yep, I was going to introduce you.
Carol Victor, Assistant City Attorney, Vice Chair Martin, members of the Planning Commission. I am going to outline for you the major terms of the participation agreement and the development agreement that we have negotiated with Pixar's legal team. At the outset, I want to say that the product that you have before you is the result of long negotiations with Pixar's legal team, and the city was assisted by its outside counsel, McDonough, Holland, and Allen. It certainly, I think it's the opinion of all parties, that this, the agreements that are before you are from the city's perspective superior to the 1998 agreement we had with Pixar and provide better assurances and protections to the city to ensure that the city gets the benefits of this development. So, we really do have a superior product for the council to approve. The prior agreement was a development agreement and participation agreement between the city, the agency, and Pixar, and what this agreement does is separate those two agreements, so we will have an amended and restated development agreement with the city and amended and restated agreement with the agency. The participation agreement, which is the agreement with the agency, is not legally subject to Planning Commission approval, but the agreements are so interrelated that both are being presented to the commission for their review and their recommendation. The significant deal points of the agreements are that Pixar will pay the city $1.5 million capital improvement and service fee, and that's payable in three $500,000 installments as the development proceeds. The first installment will be paid to the city on the effective date of the DA, which I believe is 60 days after it's approved. The second and third installments would be due at the time that Pixar receives this building permits for Phase 3 and Phase 4. The monies that the city is receiving may be spent for capital improvements and services that benefit the city, and they can be spent as the city sees fit in its sole discretion. Pixar will also be paying development fees that are in place at the time it applies for building permits for Phase 3 and 4. At this time, Pixar has already paid all of its development fees for Phase 2, and I note that that was a larger building that was to be constructed, but they've already paid it, and the only fee they'll have to pay is the school impact mitigation fee. Under the DA, actually, the participation agreement, the agency owns the spur parcel, which is the railroad parcel near, basically in 4240 Hollis, and we will sell that to Pixar for $35 a square foot or $287,380. The Emery Street parcels are held in ownership between, the city owns one parcel and the agency owns one parcel. The city will transfer its parcel to the agency, and then the agency will transfer both parcels to Pixar. In exchange, we're basically doing almost an equal square footage swap with Pixar, where they are going to dedicate the land on the eastern boundary of the property. In addition, they've agreed to construct landscape improvements and pedestrian improvements and a Class 1 bicycle facility to replace the Class 2 bike lane that was originally proposed for Emery Street. The agreement provides that no transfers of property shall occur until Pixar is ready to commence construction, so the city will not lose control of any parcels until we have assurance that the development is going to proceed. The agreement provides for phasing of construction as follows. Construction of Phase 2 is scheduled to commence within 18 months of the effective date of the development agreement. If it is, if Pixar's not ready to proceed in 18 months, they can have up to 42 months from the effective date, I think that's three and a half years, if they dedicate the land for the bike path to the city. And then, so we would already get the benefit of that land, it would be in city ownership, and then they could wait up to three and a half years, and then when they were ready to proceed, they would construct the bike path at that time. The Pixar has also agreed to construct pedestrian and landscape improvements along a seven-and-a-half-foot back, setback, footback, setback along Hollis Street frontage, and if Pixar fails to commence construction for Phase 2 within the time that's set forth in the development agreement and the participation agreement, the city has the ability to terminate the agreements, and the agency also. The Phase 3 improvements are required to commence within seven years of the effective date of the development agreement. If construction does not commence at that time, Pixar is obligated to pay a $1 million delay fee to the city, and upon payment of that fee, Pixar shall have up to 10 years to commence construction of Phase 3. If the construction is not commenced within that time or diligently prosecuted to completion, the city and agency have the right to terminate the agreements and repurchase the Castle property and the Emery Street parcels from Pixar, and then the bicycle path and any other public improvements that are constructed would remain the property of the city. the property of the city. With regard to Phase Four, there is no obligation for Pixar to proceed with Phase Four, it's at their option. Construction is expected to proceed any time after the Phase Three improvements are completed until the expiration of the amended and restated development agreement. The development agreement is, the length is 18 years, and the participation agreement is 14 years, or if Phase Three is completed before the expiration of 14 years, then the participation agreement would terminate at that time. I'd like to point out that the, excuse me, the agreements that are in front of you are largely complete. We expect that there'll be some cleanup of some language, especially in the participation agreement, but most substantive differences with Pixar have been resolved. There is one outstanding issue regarding what conditions the assignment or transfer of the property should be subject to with regard to Phase Three. And we are going to continue between now and the City Council meeting negotiating with Pixar's legal team regarding that point, and if we are unable to reach agreement on that point, it will be presented to the City Council for resolution. The next issue I'd like to talk to you about a little bit is the street vacation and abandonment of Emory Street. The development agreement provides that the city will vacate Emory Street, and that's one of the approvals that is before you to recommend to the City Council. In order to do so, state law requires the Planning Commission to review the proposed vacation to determine whether the vacation and the proposed dedication of land conforms to the city's general plan. With the amendments that you are being asked to recommend to the general plan, the vacation of Emory Street and the dedication of land will be consistent with the general plan with those amendments. State law also requires that you find that the street is unnecessary for present or prospective public use and that the right-of-way is not useful as a non-motorized transportation facility. As described in the traffic study in more detail, this portion of Emory Street has never existed and is shown only on paper, and it's not necessary as a local street. Because the Class II bike route is being re-rooted approximately 150 feet to the east, the bicycle lane on Emory Street would be duplicative of what the project is providing, and therefore it's not useful for non-motorized transportation purposes. We are recommending that a conditional vacation be adopted by the City Council, and the condition would be that Pixar relocate all of the existing utilities into the dedicated bike path on the eastern edge of the property. And until that condition is met, then the resolution of vacation would not be recorded and would not become effective. Do you have any questions regarding the agreements?
I just, I have one question. I've read a lot about a community benefit agreement, and I think for the public and perhaps the commission, if you could briefly explain the difference, what is a community benefit agreement? Is that something the city has entered into before?
No, the city's never entered into a community benefits agreement. I think certainly no one in the city that I know of is advocating a community benefits agreement or thinks that one is necessary. I think we, through our negotiations with Pixar and this development agreement and participation agreement with the direction that was given by council early on, certainly feel that we have gotten benefits that benefit the entire community and that we have fulfilled the city's role, the city's legal role, to ensure that the development agreement is fair and in the public interest. I think that the E-Base, who's advocating a community benefits agreement, perhaps can expand as to what they think that agreement will offer. I know it's certainly our position that the development agreement and the participation agreement protect the community.
Thank you, Carol. And I think now we're going to have a brief presentation from LSA, the mitigating negative declaration consultant.
Correct. Lynette Diaz from LSA will make that presentation.
Thank you. As Charlie mentioned, I'm Lynette Diaz. I'm a principal with LSA Associates. We're a multidisciplinary environmental consulting firm. We were the prime consultant that the city of Emeryville contracted with to prepare the environmental review document and analysis for the proposed Pixar project. Also with me this evening is Adam Weinstein, who was the day-to-day project manager on it, and if you have a lot of questions, he may be up here helping me out. So tonight, the Planning Commission is considering making a recommendation that the City Council adopt the mitigated NUG deck for the proposed Pixar project. By doing that, you're making a statement that you feel the project has been adequately analyzed pursuant to SEQA and that you have the information before you relative to the potential environmental effects to consider the project. The purpose of my presentation this evening is to summarize the SEQA process that we undertook for the project and to briefly review the key findings of the initial study in mitigated NUG deck. And I am going to try to keep that pretty brief, and then if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So I'll begin by just providing an overview of the process so everybody understands what we did and what has been done. We began by documenting the existing conditions that are out there today on the site and within Emeryville and the surrounding vicinity that could be affected by the development of the future phases of the Pixar project. Following that, we conducted the analysis to assess what impacts, potential environmental impacts the project would have. SEQA focuses on physical environmental effects. It doesn't require or advocate the analysis of socioeconomic impacts or impacts that don't result in physical impacts as a direct result of the project. So that's what our analysis focused on. We, as part of that, we prepared a standalone traffic analysis and a standalone cultural resources study that specifically looked at the historic significance of the building on Hollis Street. Once the analysis was completed, it was compiled into a draft initial study, and based on the findings of that initial study, together with the city staff, we made a determination that the project would not have a significant effect on the environment that could not be mitigated to a less than significant level, and therefore we prepared a draft mitigated negative declaration and circulated that for public review for a total of 30 days, which is what's required under SEQA. The public review period began on March 9th and ended on April 8th. I'm going to now take a few moments to highlight the key findings of the initial study mitigated NUG deck. I'm not going to comprehensively cover every single issue that was addressed in there. So I'm going to address, briefly talk about each of the topics where we did identify that there could be a potential impact if mitigation was not imposed on the project. The first topic was aesthetics, and that related to the potential mass of the building, of the parking structure, the bulk of the parking structure. Because it's a PDP for that, it has not been, the final design of it has not been articulated, so we recommended some design guidelines and performance standards to ensure that the bulk of that would be appropriate to the area. And then we also considered, identified a potential impact relative to the project on the surrounding historic buildings and recommended some design guidelines to ensure that it would fit into the context of the area and not significantly impact those, the historic buildings. Relative to air quality, there was impacts identified related to the construction period of the project. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, SEQA guidelines are very specific and state that construction period impacts are not considered significant in the Bay Area. In other air quality districts, they are, and the air quality in those districts is different and worse than it is in the Bay Area. The Bay Area is actually one of the better districts in the state of California. And based, they state if you follow their recommended measures for controlling dust on the site, that the project's construction period impacts will not be considered significant. So we detail both the basic and enhanced measures that the district recommends. Relative to cultural resources, I mentioned that we prepared a historic analysis of the building at 424 Hollis, Hollis, I'm sorry, and according, I'm sorry, and determined that based on the significance criteria identified in the SEQA guidelines, which are very detailed for historic resources, that that building did not, is not considered significant, historically significant, under SEQA, and so that the demolition of it would not result in any significant impacts. However, relative to archaeological and paleontological impacts, there is the possibility that when you get into site grading in some of the areas of the site that have not been graded or remediated, that some unidentified historic resources could be identified. So standard mitigations to address those, which are typical of just about any project in the Bay Area, are recommended in the initial study. And then relative to geology...
Lynette, I wanted to ask you a question there.
Sure.
Under cultural resources mitigation measure cultural four, page three, there's a provision in there for a determination by the Native American Heritage Commission within 24 hours of a discovery of, or determination by the coroner, that this is a discovery of Native American heritage. Is it 24-hour?
Standard.
Standard?
Yes.
It seems like a very short time period in which to respond and make recommendations, and I just wanted to make sure that was standard.
Yeah, that's the industry standard.
Okay, thank you.
The next three topics I'm going to lump into one, and that's geology, soil, seismicity, hazards, and hydrology and water quality. The project does, would have resulted in potential, significant impacts relative to all those topics, but none of the potential impacts are out of the ordinary, that aren't associated with just about every construction project that occurs. And so the mitigation measures there are pretty standard and typical of what is necessary to ensure that significant impacts don't occur in those topic areas. And related to hazards, there are two risk management plans that have already been prepared to address contamination on the site that was previously associated with the, I've drawn a blank, Del Monte?
Kaiser? Kaiser Hospital?
No, it was actually there.
Oh, Del Monte Canary.
Yeah, Del Monte, thank you. I questioned myself there. Then relative to noise, no operational period noise associated with an increase in traffic was identified, but noise associated with construction was identified as a short-term construction period impact. However, the city of Emeryville, similar to a lot of other cities, exempts construction period noise as being significant as long as construction occurs during the permitted hours based on the city's municipal code. The transportation and traffic analysis, several potential impacts were identified there relative to the operation of roadways and the impact of increased traffic on those roadways. There was two impacts identified. One would be deficient operations, the project would contribute to deficient operations at the intersection of Park Avenue and Horton Street in the year 2025, because we looked at 2005 as basically what the project would be under existing conditions, because that's the first year new construction would occur, 2010 and 2025, which are the out years and cumulative years that are required to be considered by the CMA, which is the congested management agency for the area. Then we also identified a cumulative impact just overall on the city's roadway systems and that, just acknowledging that, yes, increased traffic is going to contribute to traffic on the city's roadway systems, and recommended a mitigation to participate in the traffic, the city's traffic impact fee program. Relative to the Park Avenue and Horton Street, that impact can be mitigated with the installation of a signal, and that's recommended in the mitigation measure as well. Pedestrian safety was also considered in the analysis, and a number of recommendations for mitigation measures are outlined there, and if each of those are implemented, there would be no significant impacts relative to safety, pedestrian and bike safety. Site access was also considered, and a number of mitigation measures are recommended to improve site access and to ensure that no significant safety impacts would occur. There is also a recommendation for a construction phasing and management plan to address the transition and parking on the site, as well as just traffic coming to the site associated with traffic, and make sure they follow the appropriate routes, et cetera. And then relative to transit, the project, the increase in employment that would result as a project, from the project, would impact the transit system, and that can be addressed through continuing, the Pixar's continued participation in the TMA. And then under utilities and service systems, there is a potential impact relative to solid waste generated by the project. That's actually not that big of one. I'm not sure why I made my presentation, but that's pretty normal, and there's standard mitigations recommended to address that potential impact. So I'm going to conclude my presentation and be available for any questions.
Are there any, Joe, you have some questions?
Yeah. I read your response to the questions of the law firm that was representing E-Base, and was that provided by in-house counsel or?
The response?
Yes.
No, that was actually drafted by us, and we'll be providing a presentation on those following the comments, the public hearing.
Because it was very detailed, I want to thank you very much. It was very detailed and addressed a number of my questions, so it's very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Not this time.
I actually have a couple of questions. Under mitigation measure noise one, I understand the conclusion regarding significance for noise and construction noise. There's limitations on pile driving, and we received a comment letter from Phyllis Fox on page 27. She lists a number of perhaps alternative measures in addressing pile driving as a construction-related disturbance. I'm not sure you had an opportunity to look at those in detail, but I would hope that perhaps during the public hearing you could look at those and then report back to the commission whether you believe any of those are feasible.
Sure, I can do that.
Under mitigation transportation four, you recommend bulbouts that Debra indicated Pixar was interested in paying a fee rather than actually implementing those improvements. And then under mitigation measure transportation eight, and the discussion in the MND, there's a concern for interruption of the East Bay on Park Avenue left turn movement into...
Can you reference a page in the initial study?
I'm looking on page six of your summary of mitigation measures under transportation four.
Commissioner Martin, may I interrupt for a moment?
Do we need to take a break?
No, I just wanted to point out that Pixar will do the bulbout that's required as a mitigation measure. It's the other additional bulbouts that they, that we, because there were some concerns on staff as to whether we wanted to construct them at this point and whether they were necessary or not, we reached an agreement with Pixar that they would pay $50,000. But the mitigation measure that requires that bulbout at Watts would still be part of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. How are we doing with the court reporter?
Almost.
Okay. Five minutes? Thank you. I guess my question there isn't with regard to payment, but the safety inquiry issue and how best to resolve that, and whether it's appropriate to have the bulb on the south side of Park Avenue, and perhaps you could think about that during the public hearing as well and respond to some alternative in dealing with that issue.
Actually, I think if you'd like a response, Rob Reese could provide you a response now, although we're trying to take a break, so maybe we should do it.
Yeah, I think if we, what I'm trying to do is point out some issues that I'd like you to think about during the public hearing process in addition to the comments. I think that's it for my questions.
Thank you. We'll be sure to address those. Is that all?
you to think about during the public hearing process in addition to the comments. I think that's it for my questions.
Thank you. We'll be sure to address those. Is that all?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Lynette.
Thank you.
And now, we have a presentation from Pixar.
Did you want, did you want to take?
I guess we are going to take a break. Thank you for reminding me. How much time do you need? Five minutes, 10 minutes, five minutes? So, we will reconvene at 9:34.
And you've got to get the security, the code is.
So, we're ready to reconvene the Pixar item on the agenda. I think Pixar is going to make a presentation.
Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for having us here tonight. First, I'd like to thank again the staff of Emeryville for helping us with this process. It's been a long process, and I really have appreciated the professionalism and the integrity of all the city staff, Mike and Carol, and John, and Pat, and Charlie. So, it hasn't been an easy process, but as we stand here tonight, I feel that this is a project that Pixar really can stand behind, and I hope that Emeryville and the city will stand behind it as well. I'll try to be brief. I know everybody's tired. And I am going to go through the plans, but I'll go through them briefly, because it sounds like everybody at least now has some knowledge of what we're proposing as the plans. But before I do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about Pixar and about some of the benefits that I think this plan is going to bring to the community. A year and a half ago, we were here at a study session to council, and we heard comments. And a year ago, exactly to this month, we were at another study session to the planning commission, and we heard a lot of comments at that time. And one of the things that I heard especially was, you need to get out into the community and get responses to your plan, and then come back and tell us that you actually have addressed the needs of this community. And I feel that we've done that. In fact, I know we've done that. Pixar is a big community player, and regardless of this project, Pixar is out in the community. And we have invited the community into Pixar many, many times. We do fundraisers, auctions, we're on various boards in this city. We're on the board of EEF, we're on the board of Ecap, we're on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. We are very involved in the educational community, and that's one of the things that are really dear to Pixar. So, we have gotten a lot of feedback from the community regarding this plan, and I just want to try to address some of them as I go through the project, because I know that's important to you as commissioners. But before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about the financial benefits that this project's going to bring to the city. And I did put a more up-to-date spreadsheet just on your desk just now, and because the one I had given you earlier, I had inadvertently left off, I left off a couple of key things.
Tom, do you want to put that on the overhead?
Sure.
I'm not sure it'll be legible, but we can try. Should just, are you trying to focus?
Okay. Well, let me just talk anyway. And if we can get, if I can get some help, then I'll be happy to put that up.
Deborah, can you help him zoom in on that, please? Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, so, let me just talk a little bit about some of the one-time collections that the city of Emeryville has already recognized or will recognize with this project. When we bought the castle property, we gave the city, the housing low and income, low and moderate housing agency $860,000. We've also given the general fund of Emeryville $450,000. So, those are two things already that we've given to the city. As staff mentioned, we will be giving an additional $50,000 towards public safety, and we will be giving an additional $1.5 million over the course of the next three phases, with the first $500,000 due when we pull our permit for the next building. So, if I add all those up, plus the sales taxes that will be due from campus construction, will be contributing approximately $4.4 million, $675,000 to the city over the course of this project. And that does not include art fees, permit fees, et cetera, for phases three and four. On an annual basis, the city of Emeryville at full buildout is going to realize approximately $5 million in property tax, parcel tax, utility tax, and sales tax. And of that $5 million, approximately $3 million comes from property tax. And I'd just like to point out that of that $3 million, 20% of that, which is approximately $600,000, gets set aside for low and moderate income housing. And that $600,000 every year can be turned into a $6 million housing bond. So, every year Pixar is going to give you the ability to raise a $6 million housing bond. And I think that's a significant thing. And then, I've talked a little bit about some of the things we've done in the community. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go over any of those things again. But I would like to just make a general comment. I think a lot of people in Emeryville don't always realize how much Pixar does for this community. And we don't stand up here and grandstand, and it's hard for me actually to do this, but we do feel very much a part of this community, and it would, and we know that a lot of people recognize it. So, I think tonight maybe some new people will recognize some of these things that we've done and will continue to do. I want to talk a little bit about, one of the things that we heard was that people thought that traffic would be a problem. And I think Lynette and her team are already going to address and have addressed the traffic mitigations. But I want to talk just really quickly about some of the things that Pixar internally does to try to reduce traffic in Emeryville, because nobody knows this. We haven't really given this out to anybody. First of all, I'm really happy to say that Pixar was named by the EPA as one of the best Bay Area, one of the best Bay Area's best workplaces for commuters. And that designation is given to those companies who offer a high level of alternative commute support programs. And some of those programs that we offer is, are a $45 per month transit pass subsidy to every employee. That can be used for BART, AC Transit, Muni, whatever. We offer a pre-tax transit pass purchase program, so if you spend more than $45, you can have money taken out of your paycheck that's tax-free up to a certain limit. Of course, we contribute to the Emeryville Round, and we will continue to contribute even more as we grow. We have joined the Alameda County's Guaranteed Ride Home Program, which means that if you are in a rideshare program or are taking alternative modes of transportation, and you have to work late, or for some reason you miss your ride, you will be given a free voucher for a taxi all the way to your home, no matter where you live. We, of course, support the Bike to Work Day, which is a big deal at Pixar. We always have people who just jam our hallways with bikes. And the fire marshal didn't hear that, I hope. And we also have a van pool program where we support vans, and we pay for the leasing, maintaining, and insuring of those vans. And as that grows, it is in place, and as it grows, we'll continue to add more vans as need be. We offer, every new employee is provided with a Commutes Benefit Program kit. And lastly, which I think is great, we have a personalized commutes benefits consultant on tap to come in and talk to anybody at Pixar anytime, to talk about all the various forms of commuting and how to save, how not to drive to work. So, those are just some things that I know haven't been brought up at all, and it's just another thing that makes Pixar such a wonderful place to work. And I hope, what you realize, it is really a wonderful addition to have in your community.
Is there a chance we could get a copy of that list?
Sure.
Because I think we can give that to our other partners.
Absolutely.
That's very good.
Okay, so, let me just, I know staff did a really good job of presenting the plans, but let me present it from our point of view. And so, I'm going to just walk around a little bit. What we have in front of me, and I'm sorry if everybody can't see this, but it's the massing model. And what we're here for is the PDP. And the PDP is all about massing. It's not about how the buildings look. So, I just have to reiterate that these are maximum volumes that we could build, but they don't represent the look of the buildings. Otherwise, this would look like five IKEA stores. So, but it does give you a good view of what the campus will look like when it's fully built out. And I think key things to note, and this is one of the things we heard last time we were here a year ago, was that the city wants an urban edge. The city wants buildings on Hollis Street. Now, there's going to be two buildings on Hollis Street. The city wants buildings on Park Street. Now, there's going to be two buildings fronting, excuse me, Park Avenue. And whether you think that the size of our park is appropriate or not, you can see that now the size of the park has been reduced quite dramatically. And I think you could say that it's more in proportion to this overall master plan. Two things that we heard also from community members especially was, how can we open up our park to the community? And it's hard to open it up, given our security regulations and the way we feel about security. So, what we came up with, and it seems to be very, very highly received by everybody that I've talked to, is that we are building a linear park for the city on our eastern edge, and that's going to include a bike path. And I'm just going to put up a little blow up of that right here. And it's going to be really beautiful. It's going to be a really nice backdrop to the promenade center, and it's going to be a nice backdrop to our parking lot and to our campus. And it's going to be lit, it's going to be fully landscaped, it's going to have, it's going to have benches, it's going to have a little plaza that is, let's see, it's going to have, oh, I'm, yeah, it's going to have a little plaza that is directly opposite the plaza that is between Capocabana and Eresmendi. So, you'll actually get kind of a visual from San Pablo right up to this public plaza, and then that will link with the bike path. So, we're really excited about it. I think the city's pretty excited about it, and I will say that it's also quite a bit larger than what we had originally proposed, but given what the city wanted and what staff wanted, we felt just fine making it as big as it is. Then, the other thing that we're providing, and none of these drawings really show up very well, but on our Hollis Street frontage here, we looked really hard at trying to do something on the corner of Park and Hollis, because we did get comments from people about, well, what could you do on Park and Hollis? And we took photographs of it, we analyzed it, Peter Walker, who is a fantastic landscape architect, really looked at it, and, well, the people at Peter Walker at least. And frankly, we couldn't come up with anything that was acceptable, because it's not an easy corner. It's got the traffic lights, it's got streetlights, it's got transformers, and it's also very close to the edge of our building. So, what Peter Walker's office came up with, well, let's pull our building back a little bit on Hollis Street, and let's make part of this space outside the fence accessible to the public, and let's put benches there. And what that does is, as you're driving down Hollis Street, going towards City Hall, it actually opens up Hollis Street to make it feel even wider. And I think what this does, it complements what the Park Avenue District Committee is trying to do on Park Avenue, which is widen the sidewalks, widen the street, make it more user-friendly. Why limit it just to Park Avenue? We're trying to do it on Hollis Street as well. And we also have said that we will continue this space in front of our last phase when we build on the corner of 45th and Hollis. So, that alley of trees and the benches would go all the way from Park Street to 45th Street. So, let's see. Just one comment I'd like to make is that we're not going to be pile-driving in phase two. We don't need to. So, we won't be precluding the idea of pile-driving in phases three and four, but we won't, at this point, we're not planning on pile-driving in phase two. So, let's see. I could show some of the materials if you're interested in seeing it, but let me just talk about it first. The materials of phase two are going to be very similar to what we're using in our current building and on our current campus. The trees, the landscaping, the brick, the brick might not be exactly the same colors, but it'll be a combination of some colors that we're already using. So, I could spend a little more time on that, but in the interest of saving a little time, I'm not going to go into any more detail on that unless I get asked questions on that. But what I'd like to do right now is, and I'll be back, I'm going to ask John Jackson, our head architect, our lead architect, to come up here and show you some color renderings that, of phase two, which is part of our PDP. But I think it's important for you to see them, because, one, we're really excited about it, and everybody I've showed them to is really excited about it. And it will, it will make you realize that, yeah, these are just, these are just boxes. We're going to be building some beautiful, beautiful buildings in Emeryville, just like we have in the past. And I think it, when you see these, I think you'll agree, so.
John?
In the interest of time, I'll try to be very brief. Just describe what you're looking at in each of these simulations. This is on Hollis Street, looking south. You can see the corner of the 4240 building, looking at the phase two building right here, trees, the widened public space along Hollis that Tom was alluding to in his remarks. Again, you can see a simulation of the brick color there and see how that really fits into the neighborhood. The second view that we have here is looking down Park Avenue facing west. Here, what you're seeing is this two-story glass element, which is a kind of bay that is added to the end of the building. This is all conference rooms, most of the group activity areas that will be in the phase two. You can see just the corner of the phase one building over here. So, that's really facing the internal park. Here we have Park Avenue facing east. You're seeing the corner, seeing how the building and the perimeter fence fit in there, seeing how the mass of the building, set back from the street, respects the City Hall complex on the opposite side of the street. And earlier on, there were remarks about, you know, exactly how the treatment of the masonry facade, the proportions of the building, brick lintels, deep masonry openings. All of these things are really incorporated into the detailing of the building to give it a sense of permanence, of depth, of being a suitable neighborhood partner in this particular setting. So, I think that orients you to what we have in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Before I conclude, I just want to clarify a couple of things tonight that I heard that I'd like to just clarify for the record. Our current building is 35 feet high. And also, I'd like to just quickly go over the phasing because of the new buildings, okay? Because it wasn't portrayed 100% accurately. Phase one is our current building. Phase two is the building that we would be building on the corner of Park and Hollis. And then, we have the option in phase three to either build on the corner of Hollis and 45th, or on the eastern edge of the property. And whichever one we build, we will build the garage at that time. Then, phase four will be the building that we don't build in option A or B. Okay, so, I just wanted to clarify that. So, in conclusion, I'd like to just say, we're really excited to be here. We think this is a great project. We hope you do, and I'm open for any questions.
Questions of, Tom?
Actually, I have one question. You know, in the study session a year ago, there were a number of concerns raised by the commission. And one of those was the fencing around the campus. And one of those was the fencing around the campus, and how to address the wall, the appearance of a wall there. And I'm curious, with the proposed garage structure in the northeast corner of your campus, and the new bike path that you're going to be constructing, I don't see a setback in the tentative map or the model you have there. How are you gonna address safety on, you don't then intend to set the garage back? You're going to use the bike path as the screening opportunity there?
Well, yes, that's correct. And we would certainly raise the level, somehow, we'll raise the level so that...
Degraded ventilation or something else on that face?
Exactly, exactly. So we wouldn't have to have a fence on that side.
Okay. I think that's my only question for now. I'll probably have some questions later. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the public hearing portion of the meeting. And I realize everyone has, the public has waited a very long time here. Again, for instructional purposes, we are filling out yellow speaker cards. They're up to the left of the podium. We're asking you to please fill out your name and address. Hand them to Charlie, and he will hand them to me. I will then read off the names as they're handed to me by Charlie. And we're asking that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We have a large stack of cards, speakers who want to address the commission. And Charlie will be timing each speaker. And I think, Charlie, do you, what's your method of letting the speaker know that they are approaching or at the three-minute?
We have a big hook, don't we?
Okay.
When it gets to, well...
Charlie, what you can do is, why don't you give me a 30-second time limit? And I can key the fact that the speaker has 30 seconds.
All right.
Is it, will that work for you?
Sure. And when, but when three minutes is up, I'm going to say the speaker's time has expired.
I'll try to give a 30-second warning, so that the speaker can wrap up.
You want me to just sort of...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that sounds fine. So, the first speaker card we have is Tom Frenier. I'm actually going to read off a list of names, and if you could please line up behind Tom, so we can do this somewhat efficiently. The next speaker we have is Jason Blaylock. The next speaker is Lance Thornton. The following speaker is Ronald Silverman. And when we get to Ronald, I'll announce a few more names here. So the first speaker is Tom Frenier.
Hello. I'm the owner, CEO of Semi-Friede Bakery, one block away. The famous 4242 Hollis building. It's always kind of humbling to see your building on the demolition block down the road. But anyway, the main reason I came here tonight, and I talked to Tom Carlisle earlier, we've actually sort of reached an agreement that we're gonna, you know, extend, you know, be there for the next seven years. They're gonna honor that. And that's really what I was here about tonight, to make sure they weren't gonna demo the building next week or anything like that. We would love to stay in Emeryville, you know, when that lease expires. We've been here 16 years in June. We moved in the summer, that Del Monte did the last canning over the summer, and then we survived the Kaiser scare of eminent domain, and we'll survive the Pixar thing. You know, I just wanna say, they've been a great landlord. They've been easy to work with. It's great to have a landlord that has money to fix things. And, you know, they, just like they are, we're very, I don't know if people know it, but we're very involved in the community as well. We donate over half a million dollars with a fresh bread to charities every year. We just donated two vans to E-Cap. I was on the board that identified Bob Cantor as the new CEO of the Emeryville Board. And we love being in Emeryville. We hope we can stay long-term. But like I said, Pixar seems like they're pretty straight-up people for a big corporation, and I'm glad to see that the demolition will happen after we leave.
We're gonna try to keep you.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Next speaker is Jason Blaylock.
Hi. I just wanted to comment real briefly on the proposed construction here, the new buildings for Pixar. I live about a block from the proposed site, down 43rd, kind of straight down from Eres Mendi. And, you know, I think Pixar has done some good things for the community. It's brought a lot of money in. But the reason that I'm here is I wanna make sure that the, you know, the new buildings, the new employees, and the changes to the community that happened are done in a fair and equitable way. And basically, what I'm here to ask is that the commission here considers, and I strongly urge you to look at doing a full environmental impact report. We have 38 people that came here tonight to ask for this environmental impact report, which is a huge number of people from the community that I, you know, urge you to respond to, being our representatives. And many of them had to leave because of the long explanations of what's happening here and other things to do. But I did want to note that and urge you to vote on doing a full environmental impact report. I don't think it's unfair to say that the commission has a certain vested interest in bringing Pixar into the community. And Pixar obviously has, you know, obvious interest in being here. But we wanna make sure that you hear from the entire community, and that you look at all of the impacts that this might have. The gentleman from Pixar noted that the construction they're suggesting now is much larger than originally proposed. And I'm not sure if that was taken into the original assessment of the impacts, you know, the brief impacts that was published or reported to the community. I'm a little bit concerned personally about the idea of having a huge parking lot right behind Eres Mendi. And Capa Cabana and all the other stores that I frequent down there, that was one of the most exciting things to me when I moved here recently, was that to have Eres Mendi, which is a worker-owned co-op, which I support very much, right down the street from me. And I don't really wanna see, I don't wanna really see a big parking deck right behind Eres Mendi. I'm still a little bit doubtful about how much of an impact on traffic this is gonna have, and, you know, exhaust, and not to mention sitting out in front of, you know, the coffee shop, having a cup of coffee. I wanna hear car alarms going off and that kind of thing.
Speaker's time has expired.
So, thank you. I hope you take that into consideration.
Next speaker is Lance Thornton. Lance still here? Next speaker is Ronald Silverman.
In observing and seeing all the presentation that was made tonight, I mean, it looks to me like it's a beautiful project, but there was a few things that I noticed that weren't addressed. And being, I represent the building at 1250 45th Street, excuse me, which is directly to the north of the Pixar present building. And there's a huge problem with the shipping and receiving department and the congestion that sometimes occurs, because that is the, as far as I know, the only and the main shipping and receiving location. And there's no onsite, excuse me, there's no onsite staging area that is presently shown on the plan. So what happens is, all the trucks that have to go into the shipping, receiving, and the loading dock have to park or double-park in the street, which is on 45th Street, which is directly opposite the main entrance to the building that's at 1250 45th Street. And I don't know if that is gonna be the only shipping, receiving dock that is planned for the whole project. And if it is, I think that it really needs to be taken into consideration that there needs to be other locations for receiving trucks. I'm also not quite sure as to the inflow, the egress and ingress into the main parking lot. It looked to me like it was coming in from Park Avenue, and it was exiting out onto 45th Street. It doesn't appear that it would be tied in directly to Doyle heading north, but it wasn't, you know, it's not clear, because on the, on the plan, it doesn't show the perimeter properties that well, as to where the driveways line up. Unfortunately, I wasn't involved in any of the planning sessions, so I didn't have any input into the overall layout. And I wanted to see if that could be addressed, as to whether there's possibility of any onsite staging areas, and whether there's any future locations for any loading docks. Not to mention also that Pixar has been a wonderful neighbor. They're very responsive to any situations that occur off their campus. They have a very good security staff, and I can see that they have good involvement with the local tenants and people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next list of speakers, Amy Chen, Lorena Melgarreos, Gary Platt, and J. Peter Lanaya, Laner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amy Chen. I'm the president of my neighborhood association, Stanford 55th. We have about 40 families in our neighborhood association, and we straddle both Emeryville and Oakland. I am also an active member of Spagia, which is a San Pablo Avenue Golden Gate Improvement Association, and councilmember Nora Davis often comes to our meetings. We have about 250 active members. So, I'm here to speak in support of Pixar. My husband and I moved here three years ago because my husband got his dream job from Pixar. I didn't wanna come. We had a nice life in LA, and I, we came up here, and the first thing we did was try to buy ourselves a home. We looked all over, I looked at 300 homes, Albany, El Cerrito, Kensington, Volma Creek, and we finally chose to live here, down in the flatlands. We live about 10 blocks from here, on 55th and Fremont. And we chose to live here, down in the, in the flatlands, because we felt we could contribute. I'm also a volunteer tutor with the Oakland Public Schools. So, recently, my groups, my neighborhood association's email Yahoo list received a list of demands from eBays, and it was very interesting, basically asking that in exchange for you all giving Pixar their building permit, certain economic concessions should be extracted. Now, while I support the wealthy of our community taking care of the not-so-wealthy, I do not believe in corporate extortion. If I were to ask anyone here, if I were to force you to support the Sierra Club, would you do so? Many of you will. How about if I forced you to support the Republican Party? Some of you will. How about if I put a gun to your head and forced you to support the National Rifle Association? None of us would want to be support, would want to be forced to support someone else's agenda. In the same case, why would we expect Pixar to be forced to support somebody else's agenda? Pixar has been a good neighbor. Their primary concern is, for charitable purposes, our children's education and children's health.
Speaker's time has expired.
I know they support these causes because I have been a recipient. So, again, I ask you to support Pixar's expansion plans.
Lorena Melgarreos.
Hi, good evening. It's Lorena Melgarrejo, it's hard to pronounce, a long name. But I live in Emeryville. I moved here in December, and it's been wonderful. I'm really excited to live here, and thank, and I'm excited to come and talk to you, and also to see that our community, from, you know, coming from all different perspectives, we're interested in making our community better. And definitely having a huge neighbor like Pixar is gonna have an impact in our community. So, it's been great to see that, you know, 40 people came here tonight to, they came from home, they all had to leave their husbands and not make dinner tonight, and they had to go back. But, so it shows that, you know, we care about our community, and it's not about corporate extortion, I think that's what she called it. I wouldn't call it that, to ask the, you know, a big neighbor to do things that they're already doing, you know, give to children, to education. And what we're asking is basically for there to be some sort of accountability. You know, they're making the decisions, we wanna give to the community, that's great. So sit down with us, and we'll come up with things that we like and things that we don't like, and have some accountability. It's not more than they're already given, it's just, you know, letting us into the loop of making that decision. And so I wouldn't call it corporate extortion, I would just call it a dialogue, and that's something very needed when we're having a big neighbor like that. So, though we have different perspectives, you know, different sides of the community see it in a different way, I think that we all have the same interests in mind. So, that's something exciting, and we can work with that. But basically, tonight, I'm here to ask you to vote, to basically do the full environmental impact report, so that once you have those results, we can sit down like a community, you're part of the community, you're volunteers, and make decisions. Maybe it is the best idea to have these beautiful buildings built in our community, create new jobs. I'm not against it. I'm a labor organizer. I believe that we need jobs, we need our community to work, we need childcare, all the things that they're already contributing, that's fine. But I don't know what the actual impact is gonna be. I don't know if that's been looked at fully. So, to ask for a full environmental report is something that we came here to do, and you have that decision in your hands to recommend or not to recommend to do that. So, whether you do that or not, I think that we're gonna continue coming and opening this forum for discussion. So I thank you for your time, and I think that we have a long road ahead of us to make sure that our neighborhood is what we want it to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. J. Peter?
First of all, I would like to compliment all the speakers over here, because very intelligent talk, which is good. When we got, when I got here as a legal alien in 1998, I came from, actually, I'm born and raised in Holland, so I came in 95 to Germany, where I was three years, and I thought I've seen everything on red tape, and then it was Welcome to California. Not. I've been standing over here, I, we don't get our permit, what's wrong with us, right? What's with my accent, you know? But then again, after, of course, our governor, everything's cool with me. Anyhow, what I was trying to say is that, you know, I heard, I think last year or before, it was Prop so-and-so, Prop so-and-so in Oakland, right? They wanted more police, but they didn't wanna pay for it. And that does not go hand-in-hand. I'm sorry. So people like, or companies like Pixar, Semi-Friede's, ourselves, we've been from day one involved in the Emeryville day-to-day business, because a healthy community means a healthy business, and vice versa. And we love to do that, and we keep on doing that, like they do it. So, I speak now as the chairman of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce, which I have the honor to be, probably as the first alien over here. I will vanish momentarily. But the 27th, who is that person behind me? The 27th of January, during the State of the City luncheon, and I keep it very brief, we handed a certificate of recognition to Pixar, in the name of the Chamber of Commerce. And we said, we wanna recognize Pixar's community leadership role in support of the Emory Education Foundation, which we all know was in bad shape when we got over here. I mean, I've seen people go, I've seen them take over and all that. The Emeryville Community Action Program, the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce, the Emeryville Senior Center, the Emeryville Exhibition of the Arts, and for providing jobs, tax, revenue, and bringing recognition to the city of Emeryville, and it was unanimously approved by the Board of Directors of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much.
Mr. Laanan, could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah. I thought there were some problems with that. My name is Peter Laanan, L-A-A-N-A-N. And my father was Shee Laanan. Okay, no, it's a pleasure, sorry.
Thank you. Gary Platt.
Gary Platt.
Next group of names, Liz Altieri, followed by Robert Perlmutter, followed by Bob Cantor, followed by Dr. Stephen followed by Bob Cantor, followed by Dr. Stephen Guest, followed by Deborah A. McCarthy. Liz Altieri?
Yeah. I'm here representing the Emory Education Foundation. I'm on the board there. I'm gonna give you a few specifics as to exactly what Pixar has done to support Eiff. They've made the largest unrestricted corporate donation to Eiff. They've hosted Eiff's most successful fundraising events, and they've pledged to continue to do that. They're donating many high-quality computers to the school. As previously said, Randy Nelson, who's the dean of Pixar University, is on the board of Eiff. He is now the chair of the fundraising committee. They have provided career-focused tours for the fifth graders at Anna Yates, and this year, they're going to be helping those children make a film. Randy Nelson additionally has been involved in the ESAC meetings and is very familiar with the Emeryville Youth Master Plan. Pixar's also provided professional development for teachers at the district, free of charge, to all teachers, and led by renowned authors, was in the emeryville.news recently. Given their generosity and their high level of engagement with the school community, we expect their support will continue to increase, and we're very grateful to them for their leadership as a business partner.
Thanks, Liz. Robert Perlmutter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As you know, my name is Robert Perlmutter, and I'm with the law firm of Schut Mahoney &amp; Weinberger, as you heard earlier this evening. And here on behalf of eBays, which is my client, and the city of Emeryville is not. With respect to the city attorney's introduction and the letter he submitted, I did not receive that letter before I left my office at ten after five this evening. If I had, I would have brought with me a copy of the letter my partner Ellen Garber sent to the city attorney last September, responding to all of the allegations in his letter. And I'll be certain to fax to the planning commission a copy of that letter tomorrow. As you know, we submitted a detailed comment letter to you approximately two weeks ago explaining why, under SEQA, the city simply does not have the legal authority to approve this project as it's presently proposed. I'm not going to repeat all the information in that letter tonight, obviously, though I will summarize a few key points. But before I get to that, I want to make just a brief request that eBays and the citizens of Emeryville are here tonight, supporting eBays asked me to make, which is that, as you know, it's now about ten-thirty, ten-twenty-five. There are a number of people who came here with young children, a number of children who came here hoping to speak tonight at six-thirty. In the last four hours, a number of them have had to leave. And I know this is not your intent, and I've done enough of these hearings to know they can take a long time, but a number of people were prepared to speak for the first time in their life at a public body that they feel is part of their democracy, left feeling pretty disgusted and disappointed. And I would urge you to take their considerations into account and to consider continuing this public hearing so the people who waited before hours and didn't get a chance to speak can get a chance to speak to their appointed public officials. The other thing I wanted to emphasize before I get to the SEQA issues is that eBays and the residents it's working with don't oppose Pixar expanding its facilities here in Emeryville. In fact, eBays and those citizens, and you're gonna hear from those of them who are still here tonight, would like to be able to support this project. Unfortunately, they can't do that right now with Pixar's proposal as it currently stands. And the reason for that is that the benefits of that project as proposed now for the city, and there's no doubt that there are a lot of benefits, and you've heard a bunch of them tonight from your staff and from Pixar. But those Thank you. Those benefits, as wonderful as they may sound, are just completely outweighed by the project's adverse impacts on this city, on its environment, and on the quality of life of its residents. With respect to SEQA, as you know, under SEQA, an agency must prepare an EIR whenever it's presented with any substantial evidence that a project might, not will, but might, cause a significant impact on the environment. And when you've had qualified experts submit reports stating that a project
Speaker's time has expired.
on traffic, on noise, and on air quality, as we presented, then the city has to prepare an EIR, and I'm here to urge you to do that as responsible public officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Bob Cantor, president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I prepared a very brief one-page statement for the record, which Mr. Bryant's distributing to you now. Very quickly, we obviously support Pixar's application here, and I have to say, it's not in my comments there. The gentleman who spoke just before me, in our opinion, in our judgment, got it completely wrong. The benefits are not outweighed by the impacts. It's exactly the opposite. The benefits of Pixar currently are tremendous. They promise to be much more. You heard Mr. Flores summarize some of them at the beginning of this proceeding. You've heard some of the others. You heard Tom Carlyle summarize them. This is a model corporate system who started small, is getting bigger and better all the time, and support many, many civic groups and organizations that are very close to us. We believe this expansion is consistent with the neighborhood. Pixar has worked very hard to try to integrate it to the extent it can, working with the staff, long, many hours in negotiations, to make it compatible. They're looking to build the bike path, pedestrian path, along the San Pablo Avenue. Very important. This city has put a lot of resources and time into developing and revitalizing that San Pablo Avenue portion. It's one of my favorite parts of town, and this is very compatible with that, and I think will actually help in that process. And finally, on a bigger picture, sometimes we need to step back and take a look. Approval of this project will send a very strong signal that will continue to reinforce Emeryville's reputation as a progressive and pro-business friendly town. It'll send a message to businesses throughout the region that contrary to our neighbors to the north and south of us, we are an island of prosperity and pro-business here, and everybody realizes those benefits. You have a copy of my statement. That concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Dr. Stephen Guest? Deborah McCarthy?
Good evening, and my name is Dr. Deborah McCarthy Chrysantz, and I guess I'm representing the medical for Dr. Guest and myself. I'm a dentist, and I've been a dentist here in town for fifteen years. And I might say that I'm also on the chamber board and have been involved with the chamber since I've been in town. When Pixar came onto the chamber, I was really pleased from the standpoint of education that they're so involved in the sciences. From a medical standpoint, them really promoting that, that part of the schooling is really important from a medical and dental standpoint, too. We need our kids educated in the sciences, and that's really important to them, too. They need educated kids and educated in the sciences. Also, I'm fortunate enough to have a number of them as patients, and they've been a wonderful group of patients to have, and I hope they continue and grow and make my patient base even bigger. And Dr. Guest, I think, feels the same way as I do. It's really important for them, they can make a bigger impact on education in this town than certainly he and I can. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers, we have a card from Greg Harper, but I believe he's already had to leave. John Gooding, Linda Darmstead, Mary McGruder, Tarina Aguero. I apologize for massacring some of these names, but I'm doing the best I can. John Gooding?
You did mine perfectly.
I know your name, John.
Okay. Good evening to certainly the commissioners and to my fellow citizens. I've been a resident of Emeryville for twenty-plus years now, and I have to say that in the last three years since Pixar's been here, it has really been exciting being here. We have a new ability to be really proud. We have had lots of things to be proud of in Emeryville, except probably our education facilities. And it's really wonderful to be able to be proud of having Pixar headquartered here. My grandnieces and nephews, it's hard for me to say grand anymore, but say, "Ah, Uncle John lives where Pixar is," you know? And that's true for all of us who live here, and the pride that we can take in that. I just want to point out that Pixar's first building, all the construction, was done with union labor. I also want to point out that I didn't know which hat to put on tonight. So happens that I'm currently president of the board of ECAP, our local food bank, which serves those in the greatest need in our community. Our largest contributor each year for the last three years has been Pixar. And they don't just write a check. They have somebody in management who's on the board who really works hard in supporting all of the activities at ECAP. I'm on the board and past president of Eiff. You've heard a lot of those things. I'm the immediate past chair of the Chamber of Commerce and was proud to be able to get Tom Carlyle to join our board during the time that I was chair. Right now, I'm chair of ESAC, the Emeryville Youth Services Advisory Committee. We are really enthusiastic about the wonderful plans and vision we have for the Center for Community Life. And Pixar has been supportive of our research, of our efforts, and of our development, not only by serving on ESAC, but in helping to provide us with support and administrative support. I can't stress how important and what a terrific thing it is for our community. They are the model business for, setting a standard for all other of the businesses in town. And we certainly hope that you will be as supportive of them as they have been to us. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Linda Darmstead? Can you state your name?
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Taruna Agarwal, and I've been living in Emeryville for almost four years now. Basically, I'm here today representing the youth of the community, and would, we as a community, I would like to say that we are not opposed to the Pixar expansion, but we definitely want Pixar to give back to the community somehow. They can, you know, we want Pixar to probably contribute to the job trainings for low-income workers and Emeryville residents. And we want Pixar to hire Emeryville residents for a percentage of jobs that will be created by the expansion, and also provide funds for subsidized childcare for low-income Emeryville residents. And last but not the least, I want the city council to do a full environmental impact report and make sure that Pixar fulfills our demands. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Linda Darmstead. I've lived in Emeryville for about twenty years. I've seen a lot of the growth that's happened in Emeryville, also the congestion that has happened with that growth. It's nice to have companies come into the community. One of the problems that I've seen with Pixar is the lack of knowing what jobs are available at that company. I don't know exactly how they go about advertising. It would be nice to be able to know about jobs that they have. Also, monies that they have, it would be nice to know that that money goes into a specified fund instead of a general fund, because I know general funds can be used for whatever projects need the monies, and not to very specific projects. So, it'd be nice to be able to see that happen with the monies that they're willing to give to the community. That basically, a lot of the subjects that have already been covered, so I don't want to go over those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Mary McGruder. I live in Emeryville. In fact, I've lived here for about twenty-five years, a little over twenty-five years. I work at Anna Yates School. While I appreciate the benevolence of Pixar, I, you know, hope that you will continue to support the schools. We appreciate it. But however, I do have some concerns with the expansion. I expect city officials to address concerns and needs of our community. The additional traffic along Hollis and San Pablo Avenue will continue to increase pollution and congestion. Believe it, some residents along the triangle do enjoy a view of the Bay Bridge, which is a six-story structure will obstruct. Whatever happened to the affordable housing eliminated by the project, I, along with others, would like you, city officials, to require a full environmental impact report, and as elected officials, take your constituents' demands for community benefits seriously. Thank you.
The next group of speakers: Buna Chima, David Connell, Judy Goff, Forrest G. Buna Chima? Thank you. David Connell?
I just would like to say that I would be willing to trade places with anyone who wants to speak on this issue and who has to leave. I would be willing to wait if there's someone who wants to speak.
Are you David Connell?
See, not Judy Goff. I think the person you called prior to me was not here.
Okay.
Buna Chima?
Yeah, well, there were two. David Connell was next, and then Judy Goff, and then Forrest G. David Connell?
My name is David Connell.
Connell, thank you.
I live at forty-three O'Leary Ness of Street. Excuse me, I've lived in Emeryville for the last five and a half years. We came here from the Midwest after living there for thirteen years, removing from California, from, as a matter of fact, Oakland, and were amazed and astounded to come back to an Emeryville that we couldn't recognize from twenty-odd years of prior experience in the Bay Area. It's an extremely interesting and vital community. Pixar is a major element of the vitality of the community, but I don't believe that it's either the goose that laid the golden egg nor a pigeon to be plucked. And what bothers me more than anything else about the way the discussion has gone, beginning with a community meeting that I went to about three weeks ago, sponsored by eBays, and going back about a year to the appearance of eBays at the Triangle Neighbors Community Meeting. The tendency to construe the issue of Pixar's performance in the community as something subject to demands, consultation, discussion, political process, I fully support and buy into. I'm not sure that the proposal to insist on a full environmental impact study is motivated by a concern for the community. It seems to me that the staff's negotiations and studies and the consultants that they have brought in have quite adequately explored that. My concern is that you, as appointed officials, and that the city council, as elected officials, maintain control of this process. We've already seen a shot across the bow concerning eBays' counsel on the part of the city attorney. We've seen a shot across the bow from eBays' attorney to the city challenging its ability to make a decision in this matter. I'm a voter. My Triangle neighbors are voters. There are many others in the city of Emeryville who are voters. I expect you and the city council, as city officials, to maintain control over this issue and make an intelligent decision, or I will be in the ballot box making an adverse decision. Thank you.
Judy Goff?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I'm the secretary treasurer of the Central Labor Council of Alameda County. The Central Labor Council represents a hundred and thirty-five AFL-CIO unions in the county. We represent a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred working families in the county, three hundred and fifty of whom live in Emeryville. The Labor Council supports requiring greater community benefits from developers and corporations. There's been wonderful things that have happened in Emeryville. I agree with the previous I agree with the previous speakers about that. There have been, it's a Mecca for retail. There are many businesses, and Pixar is probably a real outstanding example of a corporation who's giving back to the community. But there's been a proliferation, with this proliferation of jobs, 45% of the jobs created in Emeryville do not pay enough to allow two workers working full-time to support their Community benefits agreements, which provide job training, local hiring, local hiring, the right to organize for entry-level workers, affordable housing, and childcare are things that combat poverty. The city and Pixar are good for the community, but not all of the community. And when people say, "Don't try and leverage Pixar," gains working people have made have never been given to them. They have always had to come, and they've always had to fight for it, including raising the minimum wage, including living wages. I wish I'd known when all this development was going on here. There should have been a living wage imposed that would have allowed, with all the giveaways and the subsidies that happened with the building of all these retail businesses, the financial advantage to the people coming here to do business here in the city. There should have been some living wage considerations. We're a day late and a dollar short, but we are here making that ask. If that's seen as something that we shouldn't do, I for one am not ashamed to do that and to stand up for low-wage workers. We asked for a full environmental impact report. There are many, many, many things that will happen with this big campus, and they are not all mitigated, or to the extent that they should be.
The speaker's time has expired.
You should listen when it says that you need to have a full environmental impact report. We stand with that, and we urge you to do that.
Time has expired. Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I just have one more comment. I just have to make this, because I heard so many good things in this room when there was talk about the previous matters that came before you. The desire for people here to have a bigger sense of community. And an upscale bar's been approved. I think that's a great idea. But how about a worker center? For workers with in low wages where they can come and they know they can get reservices there to be lifted out of poverty? That, too, would contribute to community.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Forrest G.
I'm Forrest G. I'm the current president of the Emory School Board. And Liz Altieri and John Gooding have let you know about most of the good work that Pixar does for the education of the students here in Emeryville. And I just need to highlight some other things that they do. Last year Pixar, through its fundraiser, funded all the college scholarships for all the kids going to college that applied for a scholarship this previous year. They provide after-school tutors. Right now, I believe we have five. We have another 10 in the queue that are tutoring our children here at the schools. Their buildup, which will promote parcel tax, educational parcel tax dollars, what that funds specifically for our students here in Emeryville are art, music, counselors, librarians, science, math, literacy. Those are things that all of the students here at the Emeryville School District benefit from. So, thank you for your time.
The next group of speakers, Shirley Faircloth, Bill Ruder. Difficult one. Shailushi Baxi?
She had to leave. She submitted written comments to the commission.
Thank you. Liz Pearlman?
She also had to leave.
Thank you. Bridget Birch. And Sarah Harper. Before we have the next group of speakers, we only have a few more cards. And if you would like to address the commission, the speaker cards are up to the left of the podium. Please fill out with your name and address and submit them to Charlie, and he will forward them up to me to read off.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Faircloth. I live on 63rd Street in Emeryville. I've lived there for 10 years. I have seen the expansion of Emeryville as a kind of a mixed blessing in terms of traffic and I'm sure in terms of pollution. I also think I'm glad that Pixar has helped with housing, with affordable housing, but I think Pixar is quite a wealthy company. They could probably afford to do a little more since they were, where their building was supposed to be a place that was providing housing. I also am a person who was a working woman for about 46 years in a unionized job. I'm happy to hear that it was a union job for the construction, and I hope the next one will be, too. I'm also interested that the jobs that are provided should be offered to Emeryville residents first, before they're offered to anybody else. That would also cut down on all the traffic, because they'll be here. And I really hope and pray that, you know, that you'll respect the workers' rights to organize a union if they so choose. I was a union member for years and years and years, and I can't tell you how much my life has been improved by being in a union. Thank you.
Did I get that correct?
My name is Bill Reuter, like the news agency.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of 2 Commodore Drive, number 175, and I've been a resident of the city of Emeryville for 25 years. I'm not here as a critic of the growth-for-revenue strategy that's been adopted by the City Council and by John Flores. John Flores, in fact, corrected me. It's not only growth for revenue, but growth for diversity as well, and I'm sure he's quite right. I've been a supporter of the existing City Council members, and I'm appreciative of the volunteer service that the commissioners perform, such as they're performing this evening. And I'm not anti-Pixar. Indeed, I'm going to heap a little more praise on Pixar on top of all the other praise that's been heaped on them. It's an asset to the community. It's a magnet for future positive development. The revenue flow that it's generating is going to help the city. It creates jobs, and I was delighted to hear that, and I heard it from Tom Carlyle the other day, that the construction of the buildings already in existence on the campus was union labor. That makes sense to me. And the give-backs to the community have been substantial, schools, what have you. They support transportation. They support a variety of things. But I'm also pro-Emeryville and serious about my support for Emeryville. And I absolutely don't see any reason in the world for you folks not to support the idea of a full environmental impact study to find out what the expansion of Pixar campus, which I think will be very desirable, in fact, will be, and to serve out the problem of mitigations and to make sure we understand what the consequences will be. And I also don't see a thing wrong in the future for you civic officials, perhaps particularly for the City Council members, to take seriously the idea of community benefit agreements when big projects go forward, or even small projects in the city of Emeryville. So I guess, in effect, I'm saying to you and to others who serve the city, as good citizens do, slow down, take a deep breath, make sure we know what all the consequences of the expansion are, and let's make sure that by a process of listening to voices that perhaps you haven't heard before
30 seconds?
in Emeryville, that both the city of Emeryville will prosper and that Pixar, one of our best neighbors in the community, will prosper as well. Thanks for listening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bill. Bridget Birch?
Yes. Good evening. My name's Bridget Birch. I live at 1065 45th Street, apartment number 11, Triangle Courts. I'm a single mother of four children. I've been in this community for about 10 years, and I've watched all this development from Home Depot, Kmart, Pack and Save, everything come up. And in the last 10, and in these last 10 years with Pixar coming in, and I have nothing against them, I love their movies and great, thank you very much. My kids love them, because I have to go out and purchase them. But the fact of that with this new development is fine, okay? You have to develop. Okay, I understand that. I've been in construction myself, okay? I have a son. I have two sons, as a matter of fact. One who would love to do animation, and he loved the tour you gave him. And he came home and he was so enthused about it. I would love to see something put towards education of our children in the community that want to be animators. I have another one who is in carpentry, who just got out of school from Treasure Island. I would love to see him on a job. He's having a very hard time at this point, very low period. No one's giving him a chance. I would love to see the people in our community, like Pixar, give my children a chance, our people a chance, to be workers. I've done food service. I can't get a job in there, could I? I mean, you know, seriously. I'm a struggling mother. I'm a full-time student. It is hard for me right now, you know, to changing jobs and careers, okay? Also, with, if we don't have this environment impact report, I'm going to have to spend a lot of time with my children in the hospital, because that dust and that dirt, we have, they start having asthma attacks. I have a daughter who has allergy attacks so bad. She looks like a raccoon. She can't go to school. That means that that hurts her education. And Mary McGruder knows it. She's always calling me. Octavia's having another attack. She has to come home. It's hard on me, and it's hard on her, and it hurts me to my soul that, and my child loves school. She loves it so much. I'm just hoping that you really look at what's going to happen here, the traffic. I have children who have to cross that street, San Pablo, myself, and I've seen people and cars almost hit them, and me even, myself, okay? Just really look at the big picture here, the people in the community, please. Thank you.
Sarah Harper? Sarah Harper? Thank you. The last card I have is for Jason Crouch. And if anyone else would like to address the commission, I'd ask that you fill out a speaker card, give it to Charlie so he can bring it up.
Commissioners, good morning. Oh, not quite. My name is Jason Crouch. I'm a resident homeowner of Emeryville, member of the Board of Ecap, member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a local businessperson, volunteer, voter, taxpayer, et cetera, et cetera. Commissioners, I had the opportunity this past autumn to visit my mother's hometown of Messina, New York. It was a truly eye-opening experience coming from an Emeryville perspective. Messina, New York, is the antithesis of Emeryville. It has become a stagnant, depressed, failing town. It was once one of the more desirable growing towns in the St. Lawrence River. It has lost its vibrance and desirability due in large part to its inability to evolve with changing times and attract and retain businesses that have the insight and flexibility to maintain a healthy business climate. They have failed thus far to maintain the spirit of their town and their community, which is directly related to the health of local employers, its commercial, real estate, and other tax bases, and corporate benefactors, just to name a few. Emeryville, on the other hand, as you well know, is singing quite a different tune at this juncture. It has become an enviable, thriving, mixed-use community that has attracted attention from around the nation, let alone our neighbors, and I dare say, the globe. Enter Pixar, stage left, right? You've already heard from others, and you know yourselves, you know yourselves, the commitment Pixar has shown to Emeryville. This is not a have-and-have-not situation. This is not an us-against-them scenario. The question in my mind tonight is, where have those standing in opposition or with their hands out this evening been? I know where I've been. I've been in Emeryville. I've been watching hungry people eat. I've been watching our children get tutored and learn. I've been watching our community grow and its coffers grow. And I've been watching opportunities unfold for some that might not otherwise have seen it. I have seen a consistent and dedicated commitment displayed by Pixar, its executives, and its employees. Pixar is a bragging point for us on many, many, many levels. Commissioners, please, do your charge, do what's right for the city. And in closing, I simply say that I stand, as another citizen, supportive of Pixar and their continued success and growth as a member of our community here in Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Carla Bass? Just received one more speaker card, Carla Bass. Okay.
Carla Bass? I need to say my address again?
No, we have it on the record. Thank you.
What I've heard tonight is basically two sides of a fight, and I'm not sure why it has to be a fight. I don't think Pixar is the Antichrist here. And I am a proud member of Local 3 Union Operating Engineers, living in Emeryville for five years. And what I'm looking for is not only their continued support of the community, but also to incorporate the residents and try to figure out a way to get training for the residents, because without training, you can't have access to jobs that allow you to stay in Emeryville, because the prices at Emeryville have gone up in the last five years since I've been here. So if it's too much to ask to just incorporate the community in your decision-making, then I don't know what else to do, because we live here. They're talking about commuting, and it's like, well, there are people that live right here in Emeryville. It's like, find a way to allow for some of the community residents to get trained to work at Pixar and not as food servers, not as security guards. I mean, without access, there is no way to get that training. Because of the fact that I was in a union, I got the training that was required to do my skill, to be able to afford to live here in the Bay Area. And hopefully, you'll just find a way to allow members of this community, Emeryville, not Berkeley, not Oakland, not San Francisco, but Emeryville, to partake in the jobs that Pixar is creating, that, you know, can afford a family of four to live on. And hopefully, you'll take that into consideration and to look at the environmental impact of this expansion project. I'm in construction. I'm for building. I'm not against building Pixar, but I'm saying, look at it and talk with the community, not against the community, to try to bring this project to light. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission during the open public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And looking at the reporter, do you need a break?
Yes.
Yes?
I can for a little longer.
Well, procedurally, I think what we plan to have happen is LSA and Farr and Pierce will be available to discuss the Molly Weinberg comments.
Yes, they would like to make a brief presentation on that. Five minutes.
No, I would suggest if we could have about five minutes, Mr. Chair, just to take a breath and
Oh, at the break.
give the court reporter to have a little break, and I think staff, just to collect our thoughts and
Okay. Well, let's take a break and reconvene at 11:05, so we can move this forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Hey, Crouch?
Yes.
That was a great speech. Is that your launching for the next campaign speech?
We're waiting for staff here.
Thank you.
Is that your launching for the next campaign speech?
We're waiting for staff here.
Thank you.
Not sure where they are.
Anybody see the planning director or the
Maybe I'll call them one more time. Well, as soon as staff returns, we will continue the meeting. We're not sure where they are.
LSA is making presentations and we can ask questions.
Yeah, of LSA, yeah.
I think of LSA as, well, you have your questions off, right? Your questions are of LSA mostly?
We'll talk about design and
Yeah, and I have a question of staff about housing.
We've already gotten
Ready, Jim?
Way in excess of our
Are we waiting for Mike?
Uh, no, he's coming. I'd like to say a few words if I may, if you're ready.
Yeah, let's reopen the meeting.
Yeah.
And Charlie, you have something to say?
Uh, yes, given the hour, we're going to try to be as efficient with our time as we can at this point. In the public testimony, we have not heard any new issues that were not raised in the comment letters that we received. We have provided you with documentation of our responses to those comments. In the staff report, there are, there's summary response to all of the comment letters that were received except the ones from Ebase and Shute-Mahaly. LSA has provided you with a written response to the Ebase and Shute-Mahaly letter, and you have that before you as well. The things that you do not have in writing are responses to comments concerning air quality, noise, and traffic. We would like to ask LSA and Farron Pierce to briefly summarize their responses in those areas. We will have written responses in those areas in time for city council consideration of this item, but at this point, we'd like to ask them to make a brief presentation on the responses in those areas and then answer any questions that you may have. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so Lynette. She is. And Carol would like to say something else also.
Commissioners, I would, just before Lynette speaks, I'd like to identify for the record that we did receive two comments that were submitted past the public comment period. And one was from, it was from the State Clearing House, but the underlying letter was actually from the California Regional Water Quality Control Board. And the other letter was submitted on April 22nd from the Emeryville Transportation Management Association. And SEQA does not require a response to comments received after the public comment period is closed, but we'd like to point out a couple of issues raised in the letter. With regard to the Regional Quality Control Board, their concern was basically that there are new, more stringent standards under our discharge permit and coming online and that the city comply with that and that Pixar comply with those new standards. Our city ordinance requires that, already requires that any construction of a certain size within the city at Pixar would come within it, that they comply with the MPDES permit. I will point out that the new requirements will not apply to construction that, where the application was deemed complete prior to February 5th, 2005. So the more stringent standards would not apply to the Phase II building, although our current standards are fairly compatible with what's coming online, so it's doubtful that there'd be any difference. But with the next two phases, definitely whatever's in place at that time, Pixar will have to comply with those standards. The Emeryville Transportation Management Association's letter basically wrote to say that they're in support of the project. They expressed some concern with increased traffic and suggested that Pixar be involved in an employee trip reduction program or that a trip reduction program be required of Pixar. And I think that what we heard from Pixar is that they do have one in place at this time, and I will also note that our conditions of approval also require a trip reduction program be implemented.
Carol. Lynette.
Okay, I'll do this really briefly. As Charlie, actually Commissioner Martin, I'll first address your comment regarding, or question regarding the pile driving that was recommended in the analysis done by Dr. Fox. And I did review, as we discussed earlier, the noise impacts associated with construction are not considered significant in the city of Emeryville. And looking at those measures, I have to say, I am not personally familiar enough with them to say, you know, how effective they would be and if they're appropriate for this type of project and this site. Those types of pile drivers are, it does even indicate in the letter that they're only suitable for certain types of soil conditions. So I can't say, we talked, one possibility the city may want to consider is, even though that's not a significant impact under SEQA, if they wanted to be more conservative, you can consider something like that as a condition of approval. I'm not sure how feasible that is. It's something we could maybe craft the wording of the mitigation to, I mean, of the condition of approval to allow for some flexibility depending upon some further information that I could provide the city at a later date.
I get, and my main point in asking Lynette that question was the suggestion of using a pile driver that has an enclosure on it. So when the strike comes down on that pier, the noise is attenuated, and there's a reference that the attenuation can be as much as 20 dBa. And knowing what we've all heard and listened to over the years with pile driving, I'm just wondering if, if this type of pile driver is available and can we use it to address the repetitive noise?
Right.
Understanding that it is short-term and your conclusions with regard to significance.
And I'm not personally familiar with it enough
That type of pile driver?
Yeah, to say it is here tonight. So then I'll just spin, as Charlie mentioned, our, we did provide written responses to the majority of the comments in the Ebase letter and the Shute-Mahaly and Weinberger letter, with exception of three areas in the Shute-Mahaly letter, which included the air quality and noise comments, which were provided in a separate attachment. That was, the analysis for air and noise was prepared for, by Dr. Phyllis Fox. And her comments have categorized into three very broad topics. One, the first related to construction period air quality impacts. We've talked about that some in my earlier presentation, but essentially that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, SEQA guidelines do not identify construction period impacts as significant as long as their guidelines for site dust control are implemented. And they detail both enhanced and basic measures. We've recommended implementation of both of those. And they, their analysis compares to the threshold, a threshold that's not appropriately compared to construction period impacts. It's one that is for mobile source emissions. So on our conclusion relative to their comments on the construction period impacts, I'm sorry, is that they will not be significant and additional mitigation measure is not warranted based on the additional analysis that they've provided. They also raised concerns about public health impacts. And we do not believe that these are appropriate to address related to construction as the current method of determining health risks of this type consider only long-term exposure of 70 years for residents. And so when you look at construction in that timeframe, the effect is so minimal, it's not really even measurable. They also raised concerns about diesel exhaust. Diesel exhaust does not have a recognized acute health risk at this time, and so there's not a threshold to compare it against. The second broad topic that I'll talk about is construction noise. That was, there was a lot of detailed analysis in their letter pertaining to that. Again, that is an area where the city does not, based on the significance threshold that they use and they've used on other projects, does not consider significant. And then finally
May I pose a question to staff? There's one recommendation in the mitigation that Dr. Fox identified that I would think could be something that could be easily accommodated by the, by the city, and that's identifying, you know, notifying people of where they could contact, a name and a phone number of an individual with the city or somebody out on the job site where they could contact if there are problems with noise.
Well, we, that's a standard condition
Is that included in the standard? Okay.
I believe we have it in, in these conditions. If we didn't, we should have, but we require all
I didn't remember seeing it, but I looked at a lot of stuff today.
The planning commission always makes sure those signs go up and I get calls if they're not.
Yeah, because I think that's really important and that's something that I don't see as an egregious request.
It is, it is in the condition.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Then finally, relative, they had comments relative to both operational period noise and air quality impacts as well of, as well as, as well as, boy, at this late hour, I can't talk, cumulative impacts associated with the operational period. We did carefully consider the additional information that they provided and the additional analysis they provided, looked carefully at the analysis that we have done as well. We concluded that the analysis provided in the initial study is defensible. It provides the same level of analysis that actually would be provided in an EIR, as well as the traffic analysis does as well. If, if the city was to choose the direction of an EIR, then the level of analysis that we did is the same. And the findings would be the same in an EIR as well, based on the analysis that we conducted. And for those topics, an EIR does not require additional analysis. A more detailed written response will be provided to the city council on each individual comment received relative to that. Do you have additional questions? I'm happy to answer them. And Rob Reese with Farron Pierce will summarize the comments received and responses for the traffic-related items.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynette? Nope. Thank you, Lynette.
I'm Rob Reese with Farron Pierce and Associates, and we were the traffic engineering firm responsible for the traffic analysis in the mitigated negative deck. My comments will pertain to Tom Burhard's letter. He's a traffic engineer that was retained by Robert Perlmutter, I apologize if I got that wrong, to peer review our work. And so I'll address his, his comments. But first, I wanted to address the commission's issue regarding the bulbouts at Watt and Park Avenue. The intent of the bulbouts is twofold. One, its primary purpose is to reduce the walking distance for pedestrians as they cross Park Avenue. Right now, pedestrian has to walk out into the parking lane, then walk through the travel lanes where the cars drive up and down the road, and then walk through another parking lane to cross the street. What the bulbouts or curb extensions would do is that they would protect, in a sense, they would protect the parking. So they would come out as far as a parked car would. And so the pedestrian then can walk out on the curb to that location at the end of the parking, they can more easily see down the corridor, and then when they walk across the street, it's a shorter distance, walking-wise. There's a number of ways in which to construct the curb extensions or bulbouts that can cause traffic congestion by not allowing cars to drive around other cars that are waiting to make turns. But you can also modify those designs so that cars can bypass somebody that's trying to turn left or right at the intersection. And what I'd like to do is just to illustrate that, at the council meeting, I'll bring some different alternatives of how the curb extensions could look from a design perspective. And then we can talk and have a discussion about the traffic flow through the intersection. With regards to the peer review comments, I guess in general, I would just say there's sprinkled throughout the comments or the questions are references to our 1998 traffic study. And I just wanted to make it clear that the 1998 traffic study was completed prior to any Pixar development being here. And as such, we had to base our analysis off of theoretical data, published data, generic data that is based on industry nationwide average traffic rates, for example. The study that we completed for this project is based on traffic data that we collected in 2003, last year. And so the basis for the study is based on traffic conditions that exist at this time, not traffic conditions that occurred back in 1998. We also have the luxury of having a project here, Pixar, that is in operation, that has a substantial number of employ, employees. And so we're able to survey the site to identify what its specific traffic characteristics are like, which is a substantial benefit to us. If we were to use industry rates, for example, like the headquarters, there's land use that's in the ITE trip generation. That headquarters, those 18, those 20 studies that represent the trips in that report could be a Chevron headquarters, it could be an Intel headquarters, it could be the bakery headquarters, if they had multiple stores throughout the area. It's, it's generic. We had the opportunity to use actual data that we observed in the field, and that brings it to a higher level of standard than using generic average rates. With respect to some of the other issues, I'll just go through them very quickly. The peak hour trip generation rates that we did use, the peer reviewer indicated that we should have adjusted the rates to take into account the actual number of employees on the site at the time that we did the survey. This is not ITE practice, it's not industry practice. What you look at is a typical day. And during a typical day, you have people that are sick, you have people on vacation, you have people that leave the site to go to meetings, and you have people that are invited to the site to go to meetings. And so what you want in a traffic analysis is a typical day. Our study period that we looked at in October and then did some reassessment in April and May, those are time periods when there are not vacations generally. They're not right around holiday periods, and therefore they reflect what we believe to be is typical days. With respect to the number of Pixar employees potentially being underestimated, this is actually a good representation of a development like Pixar that has unique characteristics to it, that has collaborative work areas, that has areas with a lot of high-tech equipment and very few employees, and multiple meeting rooms and other activity areas. The consultant identifies square foot per employee ratios, and those range from 349 square feet per employee with Phase 1 upwards to 382 square feet per employee with Phase 1 and 2 combined. Typical office uses, typical headquarters like a Chevron or an Intel or some of those large firms have employee ratios of 250 to 300 square feet per employee. That represents about a 20 to 50 percent higher intensity than what a, what Pixar is generating. And so that goes to show the uniqueness of Pixar compared to a lot of generic businesses and headquarters. With respect to the trip generation data not meeting ITE practice, there, there is no, by, excuse me, the trip generation data is significantly lower than accepted ITE practices. The statement is a little bit confusing because there is no accepted practice for The statement is a little bit confusing because there is no accepted practice for determining a minimum peak hour trip generation rate or a maximum peak hour trip generation rate. So I'm not clear as to what he intends there. However, he does say later on in the paragraph that it is acceptable to use specific data as a way of determining trip generation. Just trying to hit the highlights. The peer reviewer goes on to make comparison between the rates that we used in this study and the rates that we used in 1998 study, and I just want to reiterate that this was based on an actual operating Pixar facility, whereas 1998 was generic and theoretical. He makes a comment that our capacity calculations contain errors, and he uses an example of the intersection delay being 11 seconds without the project, and then it increases, or, excuse me, 12 seconds without the project, and then it decreases to 11 seconds. And he makes a statement, something to the effect that this just is not possible if you add traffic to an intersection, but it is possible. If the approach that you're adding traffic to has a delay of five seconds for each vehicle that goes through that approach, and your average delay for all the vehicles is 11 seconds, then if you add more vehicles to that approach that has five seconds of delay, by default, your average delay for the intersection as a whole decreases. If you add the traffic to an approach that has more delay, then your delay would increase. And so what he's, when he refers to this location, what he's failing to understand is that the traffic is being added to an approach that is operating very well, much better than the average. The next issue that I think's important to highlight is the 2025 traffic volumes on San Pablo Avenue. In this section, he's referring to the Alameda County Congestion Management Agency analysis that we conducted, and I just want to make it very clear that that analysis is actually a, it's a regional-based network, it does not include all of the roads in Emeryville. For example, one of the traffic analysis zones in that model covers Hollis Street, 45th Street, the railroad tracks, and Powell. That is considered one zone, and therefore has one or two connections to the surrounding road system. Likewise, the model does not include roads like 53rd Street or 45th Street because they are not considered regionally significant. The second issue is that the CMA model is a broad-based model, and it is a, I would say it's a bureaucratic requirement. The CMA requires you to do this analysis their way, and what they mean by their way is that the model is given to you, the model was already run by somebody else, we are not allowed to change the model, we have to simply take the numbers out of the model that they give us and put them on the paper in the table and then say whether there's an impact. So we don't have the ability to look at how the model assigns traffic, for example, in that very large zone, to make sure that it's being assigned to the roadway system properly. So the model, it's a requirement, it's a bureaucratic requirement, but it does not have anything to do with the actual traffic operations that exist out there today or that exist out there in 2025. Then there's a couple of issues regarding the Park Avenue access mitigation. He goes on to identify, he states that the, let me just paraphrase this. The Park Avenue access, I identified stop sign warrant, or stop sign installation as a technique for trying to both balance the delay at the intersection for all cars, but more importantly, to give a more, a better balance between pedestrians and vehicles. Warrants for a stop sign are guidelines only. They are not, they are not direction, they are guidelines, and so I believe the installation of a stop sign is necessary in order to balance pedestrian and vehicle activity. It is not a warrant, it is my professional opinion, he has a different, or he thinks The mid bicycle crossing that he identifies, there is no mid-block bicycle crossing. There is a Class 1 bicycle facility that starts at Park Avenue and continues to 45th Street. If you're a pedestrian on that facility, you are connected to the sidewalk system on Park Avenue or 45th Street. If you are a bicyclist, you have a stop sign at the end of that path. You stop, you look at the traffic flow on Park Avenue, and you proceed into or onto Park Avenue as a motor vehicle. Bicycles are motor vehicles. They are not allowed to use crosswalks, and they are, they are intended to be bicycles, they are intended to be vehicles. That is how they're defined in the California Vehicle Code. And so we do not allow, or we do not want to have mid-block striped crosswalks. We have a stop sign, and the bicyclist stops and waits for a gap in vehicle traffic and then proceeds and operates as if they're a vehicle. There's reference made to the, there is reference made to the bicycle boulevard and the idea that because it's become a bicycle boulevard, will have traffic redistributed throughout the area. There's only 3,900 cars using 45th Street in a typical day. That is representative of a local corridor, so you won't have traffic diversion because the corridor is not being used as a through route, it's being used as a local access to the area of businesses along the corridor. With respect to the sharp reverse curve, the consultant identifies a design speed of 40 kilometers per hour. That represents 25 miles per hour, so what he is saying is that a bicycle path that is a multi-use trail for bikes and pedestrians needs to be designed for a bicyclist traveling 25 miles per hour. I don't know where he gets that information. The information that our firm uses when we look at bicycle paths and designing bicycle systems is a 15 mile per hour design speed, and we have never been, that has never been contested. If there's an issue with speeding bicyclists on a bike path, then you can install speed limit signs, which bicyclists are required to follow. With regards to the access gate, I think that our mitigation for this is actually quite strong counter to what the consultant says. We have said that if there's any congestion on the public street as a result of their entry gate operation, and the city deems it to be unacceptable, the city can force Pixar to open up their gates and allow free flow in. If you allow free flow in, that gets you 600 to 800 cars in a peak hour, which is more than sufficient to cover the amount of traffic coming into the Pixar site. However, we have a fallback. If that does not work, then Pixar would be required by the city to open up the gate on 45th Street during particularly busy times. I think this is a very good mitigation because it gives several levels of opportunity for the city to interject their views and force Pixar to do what's right for the public street system. They have, they have that ability now, by the way, but they have chosen not to activate it. You've heard about the opportunities that they have with the public transit in the Business Development District, Business Improvement District. The last item that I think is of importance for tonight is the 45th Street at Hollis Street traffic signal. We assume that it would be put in place. The city of Emeryville can go and install that traffic signal tomorrow. Therefore, we assume that it was in place and operational under all future scenarios with or without the project. And that is the end of my hopefully brief summary, and I will have written comments later. That's it.
Thanks, Rob. Are there questions of Rob?
One question regarding parking. I noticed in the PDP, they talked about the phasing, and Tom gave a little presentation on when the parking structure might come in, and he's identified that this wasn't adequately addressed in the initial study. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that one. We identified the impact, that there will be insufficient parking onsite if they, if Pixar builds a parking structure on the existing surface parking lot without providing replacement parking. We've also said that if they use the surface parking for construction staging, that that also would be a parking impact that Pixar would have to mitigate. The peer reviewer is indicating that we should identify what that specific mitigation is now by identifying what off-site space, what off-site parking areas are available and how they might do van pooling or other types of measures. That's not for us to decide, it's for us to decide, it's for us to say that you're going to have a parking impact if you build this parking garage on the surface parking lot without providing alternatives for that parking. It's up to Pixar to decide how they are going to deal with that issue. They could, for all we know, close up for a year while they build the parking garage and just not have anybody come to work. That's their decision, not my decision and not your decision. This same issue happened with the IKEA store when they put in the parking structure there. IKEA needed to find additional parking, and rather than trying to force the parking onsite, they obtained agreements with the old Kmart site, which is now a Design Expo site, and they utilized that parking, which was underutilized, and then they had some shuttle service going back and forth, and they had some pedestrian connections, and it was used reasonably well, although there was congestion since those patrons are infrequent visitors. So I don't know if that helped.
It did, thanks.
I actually have a suggested minor edit to that mitigation measure, Transportation 11, that I'd like the commission to consider. It simply reinforces that parking requirements will be met at every phase of development. So if you look at the mitigation measure, Transportation 11, the last bullet states designate general use site access and general employee and visitor parking and circulation areas onsite. We could then insert, comma, required parking spaces for each phase of development, comma, and then continue, and any necessary off-site shuttle connections to serve designated off-site parking supplies during construction. And that, in my mind, that sort of captures the question that was raised in the comment, although we all know they've got to meet their parking requirements at each phase. It reinforces that as part of this program.
I think that's a good clarification.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Are there any other questions other commissioners have, Rob? Because I do have one other suggestion. I raised, when Lynette was presenting to us, I raised a question and concern about the bulbouts at the existing entrance and what that does to querying on Park Avenue. I know it's already an existing problem, especially during special events, that Pixar is, I imagine, trying to address. I'm just referring to mitigation measure Transportation 4 on page six of the initial Physically, what happens is the bulbouts will prevent the eastbound Park Avenue vehicles from moving around those left-turning vehicles into the access, and what I'd like to suggest in revising this mitigation measure is to simply insert, the mitigation measure reads, "The project applicant shall redesign the crossing to provide curb extensions at the northwest corner of the Park Avenue slash Watt Street slash Pixar driveway intersection and relocate the crosswalk accordingly." There's a reference to a figure there. In my mind, this is the first phase. If we get the bulbout on the north side of the street, it still allows for querying on the eastbound travel. We'll have stop signs at that intersection, which I think provide improved pedestrian crossing safety, and we can see how that functions during the first phase, and sort of resolves the questions that are raised, not just in this mitigation measure, but in a couple of other mitigation measures. Does that make sense, the commission? Under mitigation measure Transportation 6, I assume it was your engineering standard that's recommended for, this relates to the pedestrian path on the east side of the development that Pixar is going to be building, and the Class 2 bicycle lane there. There's a standard of a 10-foot wide paved path and two-foot graded area on either side. The original application had a six-foot wide path with two-foot shoulders, and in my mind, given the use and the importance of that 40-foot wide corridor, not just for the bicycle link, but for the screening of the Pixar development, I would prefer to see a maximum 10-foot wide solution, whether it's six-foot with two-foot aggregate shoulders or 10-foot paved surface. 10 feet, in my mind, is more than adequate to allow for maneuvering of pedestrians and bicycles on that pathway, and it will give us four more feet of potential landscape area.
Yeah, one issue for the commission to consider is that in order to call it a Class 1 multi-use trail, the minimum paved width needs to be eight feet. If the minimum paved width is not eight feet, then you cannot call it a multi-use trail, and combined with that eight feet, you need to have the two-foot aggregate shoulders on either side also.
As part of that designated standard.
If, if you want to call it a multi-use path, yes, you do. Otherwise, it's a pedestrian-
You know, I think for the, the idea of a bike plan and something that connects to other segments of the plan, it's important to maintain a designation. I'd at least like to get the two feet out of that path. If we're allowed to go down to eight feet of pavement and two feet shoulder, we'd get two more feet of landscape area along that buffer, and if the commission's agreeable to that, I'd like to see that planning area.
You on my opinion?
Yeah.
My opinion is that wider is better. We prefer the 10-foot path, especially if it's going to have both bicycles and pedestrians using it on the greenway north of Ocean. I don't know what, I don't recall what the exact widths are, but that has a separate bike path and pedestrian path side by side. At this location, we don't have that luxury. We just have one path with both pedestrians and cyclists using it, and my opinion is that the volume of use that we hope this will get would dictate that we think it should be a minimum of 10-foot paved, and, you know, I don't know that, if you reduced it to eight feet, you'd actually pick up one foot of landscaping on either side of it. You will have, let's see, 10 feet in a 40-foot right-of-way, you will have 15 feet of landscaping. Well, no, you'll have, with the shoulder, you'll have 13 feet of landscaping on either side. And, I don't know, in my view, that's sufficient. I'd like to remind you that-
I'm looking for every foot, Charlie.
Originally, Tom, in his presentation, alluded to the fact that in our discussions, the parkway got wider. That was something that we pushed hard for. Originally, the design was to have 20 feet total behind longs with a six-foot path and two-foot shoulders, which would have left you, what, six feet on either side, I guess, for landscaping? So now we have 10-foot path, two-foot shoulders, and 13 feet on either side for landscaping, which we think is a big improvement.
I'm much for the safety factor because I've shared bikes, bike paths with pedestrians, and sometimes you need that extra space.
I guess, before I let the issue go, in addition to the 10 feet, we have two feet of stabilized treatment on either side of that path. My concern there is that we have a garage, eventually we'll have a garage that may be 70 feet tall, and, you know, I'd just like to- just like to see as much potential growing area there as possible. And I realize it's a balance, but-
I do want to point out one thing about the mitigation measures related to the garage. I think it would be interesting if this massing model were redone to show that. But imagine, see the existing building in the middle of that massing model and the height of that existing building. Well, if you carry that across to the garage, anything above the height of that existing building will be stepped back at a 45-degree angle. So that hopefully, the height of the garage will appear, as you're standing next to it at any rate, to be no taller than the existing building. And then the upper levels will be stepped back above that. So you'd have like a cornice or something around at the level of the existing building-
No, I understand.
... and the upper floors would sort of disappear, hopefully, unless you stood way back. So when you're standing on the bike path next to it, it won't appear to be as tall.
Yeah. My concern is really views from San Pablo Avenue and the Long's parking lot in Capa Cavana and the Plaza's there-
There will be trees. There will be trees.
Trying to screen that.
And actually, that is also in the mitigation measure, that there be adequate screening all around the garage on all sides.
Yeah. Again, that assumes you've got the planning area to achieve that. I think the only other transportation-related comment that I had was in comparing mitigation measure Transportation 8 and mitigation measure Transportation 9, Transportation 8 goes back to the querying and access and congestion on Park Avenue. And Transportation Measure 9 reserves use of 45th Street specifically. And I'm just wondering if we should have some reference back to Transportation Number 8 in Transportation 9, because that allows, if there is a problem, the city to address that. The tone of mitigation measure Transportation 9 seems to imply an exclusive right of Pixar to make the decision. And I would suggest at the end of the first sentence, we simply insert after the word "only," except as called for in mitigation measure Transportation 8, to clarify that interrelationship between the two measures. I'm not sure how the commission feels about that. I just want to make sure the two measures are consistent. When you actually read them, there's a question.
One last question, comment, sorry. And this is a follow-up to one of the speaker's concerns about adequate loading on 45th. In your review of the PDP, have you determined that there would be adequate truck loading, so that there wouldn't be conflicts on 45th?
What we believe is that the loading issues on 45th, the double parking and the like, that is an enforcement issue. And so the Emeryville PD can go out at any time and cite anybody that's double parking. So that, to me, is the resolution to any loading problems that either occur now or will occur in the future.
But is there adequate onsite loading areas?
Well, when we were out there observing the corridor, we did not observe Pixar trucks double parked. We did observe double parking for trucks that were going to the building on the north side of 45th Street. That's what we observed, and we saw that as an enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions for Rob? Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Now, it's really in our lap to deliberate and come to some decisions on where to take this application. I realize it's late, but I want to make sure we have an opportunity to fully discuss what we've heard tonight, because there are important things to consider. And I'm not sure who would like to start. Joe, would you like to start?
I'll start. I'll give it. I have lots of comments, but because of the lateness, you guys get lucky. I have three areas I want to talk about. Traffic, the secret process, and then the jobs things brought up by Ebase. The first one is traffic. I've always had the best mitigation for traffic, and I've proposed it several times. Nobody takes me up on it. Charge the Berkeley and Oakland residents that use Emeryville for a thoroughfare to San Francisco $5 a car. All right? That's probably going to help out a lot. But obviously, that's not going to happen. And if I recall correctly, I think Emeryville is the only city around that has a free shuttle to help. And I think Pixar pays for part of that, don't you? Anyway, traffic, what's going to happen here, and what people don't know, is that as we went through the planning process, if we didn't do any projects from 1992, when we first started the Catellus site, we would have F-rated intersections all the way throughout the city. A lot of the projects that we brought on, particularly Catellus, gave us the 40th Street, the bridge, the punch-through, all of these things. And we've had a lot of mitigations as these projects have come on. So we've actually improved our traffic in this city. It's just that 90% of it isn't ours. It's going somewhere else. So traffic, we're going to have traffic. It's something we're going to have to live with. We live in an urban area that is growing and growing and growing. So we're trying our best to make the mitigations, to have the, as Pixar is doing, which I really, really do want to get a picture of that transportation plan you have, we're trying our best to do that. As far as the secret process is and what we do as a commission, Chris, myself, and Paul have almost 50 years of service on the Planning Commission. I personally have been a resident of Emeryville for 30 years and have been involved in my community and/or the city for almost all that time. And so have most of these other people on the commission. So we take our responsibility to the city very, very seriously, far more seriously than most people even can believe. And we've gone through some very, very hard times. In 1992, I, in late 91 and 92, before I got on the commission, I started something called the SOX Committee, Save Our City Services. This is when Emeryville had no budget. We're a small city. We don't have a large tax base. And we were in jeopardy of losing some of our police and fire, which happened to be union workers. I went out there, formed a committee, and I was actually ready to bake. And that's scary. Bake bread to raise money for these people. Okay? So we do support jobs, and it may not be an individual area that you want to do. But as far as the secret process goes, after that particular situation, and that was resolved, thank goodness, I got on the Planning Commission, and we started with Catellus. And we had, we were just a new city, and we were learning the process, and we got pilloried. And we got requests for handouts and demands and agendas from everybody that came out of the woodwork. We didn't know what we were doing. We learned. And by the time we went through High Cross, the Plating Plant, Westinghouse, the Bayfront, Del Monte, and hundreds and hundreds of developments, and many of them very large toxic sites where we had major toxic areas to deal with, we ended up, I believe, having a Nobel Peace Prize for dealing with these issues. So we know what we're doing. We hire the good staff. We hire the right consultants, and we try our best in this city to protect our citizens. And that's where I'm going to come to the jobs. I read, we have BOSS, we have the Central Labor Council of Alameda, and then we have Ebase. And the focus of all of those people has been jobs and job training. Well, what you're not seeing here is that as a commission for the entire city, we have things to look at that may be even more important, such as, the biggest thing is the health and safety of our citizens. That means police and fire, medical services, and the elimination of toxic waste that we have in this city. These are very important health issues. The other things we have, we want to control crime. We want to eliminate attractive nuisances. Then there are lower-level things, such as affordable housing, parks, education, the arts and culture, the transportation, including Emery-Garum. So there are tremendous number of needs that we have to address. Part of them is jobs. And one of the things that happens is, let's take Pixar. They're going to give us some money for the general fund. Now, that general fund, or they may be allocated actually for public safety, now that goes to our police and fire. Well, we actually have a wonderful police and fire department. And why is that? Because we have a desirable community, and we have training. Some of that money that we have trains people to be better fire and better police. So we already have a training budget in here. So this, it's not just enough to say, well, you should put money here. Well, if you put money here, where do we take it from? Fire and police? Education? No. No. There's allocations that we have to make, and there is a plan, believe it or not, that we look to, to really bring the city up to where it is. When I moved here, and I was working in San Francisco, I told them I lived in Emeryville, and I got laughed at. I got laughed at. Now people want to move here from San Francisco. So we've done a good job. We're trying. And there has never been, in my 12 years here, and maybe Chris's 20 years here, a perfect project. There's not ever a project before us that gave us everything we wanted. And we had to arm Russell Tom a little bit, but he's been pretty good with us. So we're very happy. We know that we're going to have quality jobs. We know that we're building our housing. We know that we do have affordable housing limits that we do deal with, and we hope that some of those people will move in and work for our businesses here. So we have a plan in place, and we're trying to execute it. And I know that what you're going after, and I agree with a lot of what you say, but demands are not the way we go about it. Requests and working with the community, that's a different story. So I support the project. I think we're doing a good job here. And I will back this, our secret process to the hilt, because we've done it many, many times, and we know what we're doing.
Would you like to kind of camp in on that, because he's saying a lot-
Jump in, Chris.
Okay. We have to just kind of look at some real basic stuff here. We live in a state that has lost a whole lot of businesses over the last few years because of the fact that we have high taxes in California, high workers' compensation insurance, expensive real estate, environmental requirements. And there has been allure by other states offering incredible incentives for our businesses to leave because they can do it cheaper in another state. My company's headquarters, which has been in California since its inception, moved to Florida in November because it's cheaper for them to do business there. So all of this trickles down into the cities, figures. I know, I do it all the time. I set it off. So all of this trickles down into the cities, and the cities are having the same problem with not having any money. So anytime the city gets an opportunity to get a desirable business, then it's got to do whatever it can to hang on to it. And Pixar is the kind of company that every city would salivate to have in its town. They make movies. They do family entertainment. There is nothing about what they do for a living that's objectionable. It's all wonderful. It's charming. It's terrific. We're becoming world-renowned because we have them in town. And even though we get all these good things from them, we still say to them, okay, we're going to let you do this, but we want you to give us money. We want you to give us a million five for this. We want you to give us real estate taxes. And we ask them for all these things, which they give us because they're good citizens. But see, we're in a redevelopment area here. And these tax revenues that we get, you know, it's 3 million bucks a year, is bondable for us over 25-year bonds to get redevelopment funds for housing. And all of these funds that are coming into us from them over the years will be used by the city because we will now have a healthy budget, so we can do things for our community. We can have lots of fire, lots of police, and lots of parks, and do things. We have a childcare center where kids can send their kids to for free. And we've done all these things, but it's not up to Pixar to provide you that. It's up to the city to do. Pixar is doing their fair share. I mean, 5 million bucks a year is a big chunk of our annual budget. So I just think, you know, they are doing it. And as far as I'm concerned, we've just got to give them permission to grow here, and we should be enthusiastic about it, and understand that it's a win-win for all of us. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris. Murray or Patty? Murray?
All right. I'm very sensitive to the work ethic. The comments that we heard about jobs and work touched me. I think that Pixar, working with our schools, working with the community, can post jobs that become available with their description, first, to Emeryville residents. I don't mean to impose a requirement, but certainly, they can work with our organizations to provide that information. I'm all for Pixar. I'm all for the expansion. But I think within the expansion, they can make some showing with the belief that there are jobs available. Maybe they won't be filled by Emeryville residents, but I think the effort should be there.
Thanks, Murray. Patty, you want to go?
Yeah. Just a few things here. In addressing some of the issues that were in the Schutzhauer Weinberg letter and the Ebase letter addressing some of the sequo topics, I think that the LSA team has done a very good job of responding to those. And particularly with their responses this evening, because I did have a couple of concerns about some of the traffic comments and noise comments that were submitted by the peer review consultants. But I think in terms of traffic and noise and air quality, for example, those issues have been more than adequately addressed, and a very comprehensive mitigation package has been put forward. Concerning the housing issue and concern about affordable housing, Emeryville is doing an outstanding job of providing housing, particularly the affordable housing component. One question I have of staff is, does HCD, when they are counting housing that's being put forward, do they count in their mix to meet goals the planning-stage housing? Is that included in their mix in terms of what your goal is? Because that was sort of unclear to me. But it seems to me that the city is more than meeting those goals. But there was some discussion in the Schutzhauer Weinberg, for example, letter addressing a challenge about planned housing. And I just wanted to know, does HDC count that in towards a meeting your goal?
I believe it's based on the housing element of the general plan and what we have sites available for.
Okay.
Based on the, excuse me, based on the zoning? So-
So to me, that indicates that you are meeting your goal. You've identified sites-
By far.
Okay.
We're ahead.
Okay. I think that needs to be made clear to the audience, because it's my opinion that we are meeting our goals. But there was some debate about that in some of these submittals. In terms of the bike route, I like the plan designed for that bike route. I think the city is getting more than they're giving up. It's only shifting over about 50-odd feet. And I think- It's only shifting over about 50-odd feet, and I think that it's a bike route that really doesn't go anywhere per se because it doesn't continue through past 45th Avenue. But this presents a great opportunity. If the Center for Community Living moves forward, we have a great access point for pedestrians coming from the south, for people at the promenade, for people at Pixar, that can utilize that bike path to access this new community center, which the city envisions this as something that will be supporting the community in many ways beyond providing educational facilities for our children. There'll be opportunities for health care, health education, job training, all of those things that many of the folks from E-Base were identifying as concerns that they have, which are very important concerns, and I believe the city is in the process of addressing those. One area that, I'm going to push you a little bit more on this one, Tom, is sort of dealing with the aesthetics and the public access. I think in terms of the design for the Phase II building, I think it's a great design. I love it. It captures that sort of warehouse block look in this part of the city and Park Avenue, and I like the way this design echoes that. And I love the glass portion of it that opens it up and reveals activity in the daytime and evening hours. I think it's wonderful. I'm not concerned about the overall mass and bulk of the structures. I think generally they are compatible with the surrounding area, and they are creating a continuous street edge, which is what you usually see in a historic district with the boxes, with the old block buildings. The parking structure is a little on the tall side, but with the step backs, I think that that will address some of the concerns that people have about the visual impact of the building and the building mass. But I am still concerned about the sort of public access, people being able to have some sense of welcome. I know that Pixar is doing so much with the community in terms of outreach and providing all sorts of programs, but the fence is still, it's a physical barrier and it's a psychological barrier, and the corner of Hollis and Park is a gateway location into the city. And I know you did a nice job of explaining why you didn't think that there could be some sort of focal point at that corner, but I'd really like to see something more that could be done in terms of maybe stepping it back or opening up the fence area, providing some sort of a community space that could be access at the ground level and still maintain your security. I think if there was a way to sort of open that up to the community a little bit, it would be outstanding. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. I actually have some suggestions about that. But I guess first, I think the issues of jobs and employment and displacement are important ones. And I appreciate that E-Base has worked to educate some of the people who live in Emeryville. My concern is their approach, or my interpretation of their approach, has been an adversarial one. And this is a small town, and there's a litigious tone to the comments that we received. And in my mind, it's not a, certainly not one of a cooperative effort. And the opportunity, when you live in a small town, and the response that you get when you work with the council, and when you work with staff, and when you work with the business community, and we've seen the success, surprising to many, of Measure A and the monies that that's providing the schools, and, you know, all the efforts that have gone into addressing the deficiencies in our school district. And to be critical of the approach and the comments that we've received, I think there is a potential for alienation. And when you're in a small town, that doesn't serve anyone. And I would hope and encourage that E-Base and everybody who is working with them and has their attention realize the opportunity here of working with people in a cooperative way. And I did see Tom shaking his head up and down during the evening as some of these issues and suggestions were raised. With regard to the community benefit agreement, in my mind, that's not something that's within the purview of the commission. Emeryville has never had a community benefit agreement. I see our charge as looking at the CQ compliance, looking at general plan and zoning ordinance issues. That's our, that's a planning, in my mind, that's a planning commission responsibility. And even the suggestion of a community benefit agreement or something short of that possible entanglement is something that really has to be hammered out in policy with the council. And that's going to take a cooperative effort there. And I hope that E-Base continues in their organizational capacity and their interest in helping educate people and working with the council and the business community to address some of their needs, because I agree that there are some valid points there that have been raised. So that's sort of my criticism of one side that we've seen tonight. I also have a tendency to be very specific in my criticism as part of my responsibility, what I see as my responsibility as a commissioner. And I've raised some of those specific comments in looking at the mitigated negative declaration, and I have some others, even suggestions. Patty referred to a point that I raised earlier when Tom was making a presentation, his presentation. We had a study session a year ago, and I think the commission raised a lot of good points, and we repeatedly expressed concern about the physical separation and what that fence does as an impression. And notwithstanding the security issue, I think there are ways that you can improve on the design and allow for an improved impression as you move down the streets that surround your complex. And I actually have some specific language that I would like considered for the preliminary development plan that I'll pass out to commissioners. And if you can pass one down to Charlie and one to Carol, I guess Deborah needs one too. I'm going to actually let Pixar take a look at it. I think I will start with, before we get into these PDP issues, we had one of the owners from Semi-Freddy's address the commission tonight, and I think the commission voiced a lot of concern about that phase of development and what it does to those businesses that we want to retain here. And I don't think it's necessary to have some specific standards, but I would like some acknowledgement on Pixar's part that they are willing to, and this is separate from what the language you're reading right now, Tom, but I would like some acknowledgement in the conditions of approval that, and I actually have some suggested language and a place to include that in condition of approval under Section 2A5. And I hope you'll listen to this with an open mind, but basically I would like included in the condition of approval a statement that, similar to the following. Prior to approval of the FDP for the Hollis building portion of either Phase III or IV, Pixar shall demonstrate that they have worked cooperatively with the city and any remaining tenants of the Hollis building in an attempt to relocate and retain these businesses in Emeryville. I deliberately left that as an open arrangement, but I would like it recognized that Pixar is willing to do what it can to try to find a place, particularly for Semi-Freddy's. And I'm not sure how the rest of the commission feels about that language, but I certainly want it considered. I think what I'll do is just go through my points and then ask how the commission feels and whether we can get a consensus on those.
Why don't we just deal with them one at a time, right?
Okay.
Okay. We got Semi-Freddy's as the only tenant left in there, basically, right?
Is Pisco's gone?
Pisco's has asked for the lease from their lease.
Okay.
And we have given that. So we are helping them.
Great.
I think that's a demonstration right there.
Right. And Semi-Freddy's has what? What did he say? Another six or seven years?
Seven years.
And he is?
We will honor their lease.
Right. And the only?
No, I don't think that language is.
And that gives, I don't think so either, because he's already acknowledged that they were a good landlord, and I don't think in this free country we want to enforce them that they've got to find them another place in Emeryville. It will be up to Semi-Freddy's to find a replacement, and they have seven years to do so. And I'm sure every real estate broker in the Bay Area is looking for a place for them already.
And I think, I think Tom would agree that if he can help, if he can find something, you know, it's, I don't want to put it on him, but I'm sure Tom would want him to, want Semi-Freddy's to stay in Emeryville, right?
Could you speak up a little bit? We started a bid.
I'm sorry. Tom, is that correct? You want, you would like them to stay? So I think, I don't think we need any language.
Sorry. No, it's okay.
I guess one question that I have is, and I don't want to impose a burden on the city either, but, you know, I would imagine that our excellent staff, such as Patrick O'Keefe, will be working with Semi-Freddy's and others to the extent that they can work with them to help them. You know, so I think that it, whatever we can do as a city to assist Semi-Freddy's, because they are, they're great business, they're great for the community, they have a lot of good, well-paying jobs, and whatever we could do to help them stay in town would be ideal. Maybe it can be some sort of language that the city and Semi-Freddy and Pixar work cooperatively together to assist them in their relocation.
I volunteer Jim.
To do what?
To find Semi-Freddy's a place. I suggested Atlas.
Okay. That's true.
I thought that was a great place.
You know, my point is, we've worked very hard, the council in particular, and Patrick has worked very hard to pull in businesses, especially in the promenade. And we've done that work. I just don't want, at the same time, on the other side of Pixar's development, to lose Semi-Freddy's.
I am sure Patrick's on it.
And, like I said, I'm also sure that Tom is going to do, if he, Tom comes up with an opportunity someplace, he's going to give it to Semi-Freddy's. So I think, you know.
And the point is, Semi-Freddy's knows that they've got seven more years, but that they've got to leave sometime within that time period. So that gives them a lot of time to look for it, and I am sure that it's on the high priority list of Patrick O'Keefe's, our redevelopment agency director, to find them another place here in Emeryville.
I hope so. Murray, is that an issue to you? I guess my.
Not an issue to me.
Okay. So we've got a majority there. The second sort of point that I had raised with regard to mitigation measure noise, one was with regard to pile driving, the options there. Your employees are going to be the most affected, so I'm trusting that you will do what you can to explore those options to attenuate that noise, and I'm sure you'll do that. So I'm not concerned about revising language there.
Oh, okay. I was ready to support that one.
Yeah. Oh, were you? I think Tom will do that automatically. Before we get into that, there was one other improvement that I was, I'd like to suggest to mitigation measure AES dash one on page two. And this goes to the design issues and trying to set some standards for the future phases that we don't, haven't seen and don't have a lot of control over right now. And fortunately, we'll be able to review and make some recommendations on the FDP. But I'd like to include the following statement in mitigation measure AES dash one to provide some type of standard on the treatment of the windows for the buildings that face each of the surrounding streets. And my concern there is based on how the rear of your Phase I building has been treated and the less-than-desirable experience for 45th Street. There's not much there other than your utility function, and I realize you needed to place it somewhere, but I think one of the ways to improve on that is to set some minimum standards for windows and openings, and you've clearly achieved that in your Phase II building. The language that I would like inserted under the first bullet to mitigation measure AES dash one on page two is the following. It reads, "The proposed structures shall adequately reinforce and be visually compatible with surrounding historic brick buildings." And insert after that statement. And walls adjacent to surrounding streets shall contain a minimum of 20% window slash openings in the total wall area. Your Phase II building probably has at least 40% of openings or windows on those facades. What I'm trying to do is make sure that Pixar provides windows during each of the phases or for with the parking garage openings that you have to, you're going to have to have for circulation purposes. But, as my main concern is the Hollis building and how that's going to be resolved. I think it's an easily achievable standard, and I'm hoping the commission understands why I like that there and supports that.
So, but you made no mention about utilities.
I'm not sure, given that so far in the future, how they're going to resolve it. If you look at the tentative map, they have some driveways and some other improvements on the north side of the Hollis building. One of the big problems with the north side of the Phase I building, if you go up 45th Street, is that it's a blank wall. It's a continuous blank wall. And I just like to make sure that every one of those walls, whether they consolidate them or spread them out, that we've got windows and openings on those walls that face the streets.
I absolutely, yeah, I'd support that.
I'd support that.
Well, there are already three votes there, right?
Murray?
No.
I don't agree with it either. I just think that they've had just really superb architects on this project, and I can just not visualize. And somebody along the way is going to be doing some design review of the buildings, right? The council?
Well.
We will.
You and the council, because the FDPs will be coming to you in the future.
So I don't know why we need to add that as a condition if we, you know, we're not approving the looks of the building right now.
My intention is to give some direction to where the future solutions will go and to set some standards around how to address concerns.
I just hate to, I just hate to give somebody standards. I think we ought to leave the creativity of the architects up to the architects and not up to us. I prefer to just see what they want to do, and then if I don't like. I, I prefer to just see what they want to do, and then if I don't like it, I will tell them so. But I prefer to leave the choice up to them.
I, I do too, but I have, we have the Michael Store as tenement, testament to...
But you know, let's not compare that.
Okay. Well, no, obviously not. I mean, Pixar is, I mean, it's just amazing. But I, I don't think, I don't think this, this is onerous, because I, I think it's going to be exceeded. I think Pixar will exceed that, that requirement. I mean, that's my opinion, anyway. I think it's a good direction.
Chair, Chair Martin, can I, excuse me?
Yes.
To the extent the commission is confident that the mitigation measures are adequate to, to mitigate the impacts that were indicated, I think that some of these issues that you are trying to address, you can easily do so in the context of modifying conditions of approval. And it would be your staff's recommendation that you, you try and address those items there. Your, your revision to your, to AES 1, I think, could easily be addressed by adding similar language to conditions 7A1, which are design conditions. And I think that would be a good place to put those.
Good.
Thank you, Mike.
So does that mean we vote?
And I know you had some other, I know you had some other issues on mitigation measures, and, and we can certainly find appropriate places for those modifications, if you so choose, as a, as a commission.
The last step the commission staff and Pixar has in front of them, and that's some suggested language change to the preliminary development plan, and I'm going to walk you through overhead, so hopefully people understand my points.
Commissioner Martin, while you're doing that, I'd just like to point out that I believe the language that you're suggesting is a modification to the narrative that describes the preliminary development plan, which was something that was submitted to us by Pixar.
It's titled preliminary development plan. It was not dated, and there wasn't a source. So that, those are the changes that I made. If it was a submittal directly from Pixar, that's fine.
Yeah, it goes with the drawings that they submitted.
Okay. Is there a problem with that in, in attempting to incorporate those changes technically, or do they need to be incorporated? Well, let's walk through the changes, see how the commission responds.
Isn't this a council decision? Isn't this outside of our purview of what we're doing here tonight?
Well, what I'm looking at are the, the design issues.
You're making a recommendation to council.
Right. And some of these are with regard to the Phase 1 building, others are with regard to the design of the overall complex. And I, I do believe it's our responsibility to look critically, just as we've heard comments tonight on the SEQA document. I think it's one of our responsibilities to look critically at the design and whether it successfully addresses the concerns that the commission raised a year ago. And so what I just want to do is walk through those concerns and make some suggestions for how they can, I think for the most part, be easily addressed. I had asked Tom about the parking structure, and that is going to sit flush with the bike trail on the east side of the complex. I think there's been a concern about the security and providing a fence around the entire development to maintain that security. But as an example, in the future parking structure phase, they won't be providing a fence on the east side of that structure. And what I'd like to do, given that there obviously is a solution to taking down the fence on part of that frontage, and the possibility that we could have the community center to the north of that parking structure on 45th Street, I see another opportunity to take, taking down that fence on the 45th Street frontage from the northeast corner to the point where the garage ends near the access to 45th Street. That would provide an improvement to that experience to everybody using the 45th Street corridor, to those using the bike path, and possibly everybody using the community center across the street. If you look at the tentative map carefully, and if you look at the preliminary plans in the parcel map, Pixar's already provided at least a 15-foot setback from the right-of-way along 45th Street. And so the first request there, I'm actually at the, in the handout that I gave you under Phase 3, I suggested inserting some language that addressed some of these design issues. In the first paragraph, I talk about how we can improve that frontage north of the parking garage by taking that fence down along the frontage when the garage goes up, and then closing the fence at the northwest corner of the parking garage. I also call for the minimum 15-foot standard, which they've already exceeded, if you look carefully at the tentative map. So in reality, it wouldn't adjust the footprint of the parking structure when it's eventually built. What I'm trying to do is get the fence down wherever we can, and just as they have on the east side of the building, it seems like a simple solution to get that fence down on the north side of the parking structure, which is what I've outlined there in that, the changes to the first paragraph. And I'm curious how the rest of the commission feels about that suggestion.
I guess the question is, why had they not already thought about that since they were not having the fence on the eastern side where the park is?
I think they're...
The building itself is the fence.
Right. And I think they were trying to maximize the, the parking area in the parking structure and use the bike path and the landscaping along the bike path as a screening opportunity on the east side of the building. So by not providing a setback, you don't need the fence, and you can use the grates on the lower level of parking structure and eliminate the fence that will border the sidewalk and separate the sidewalk from that structure. What I'm trying to do is improve the pedestrian experience around the perimeter of the building, and it seems like a simple solution to achieving that.
Ask them what they think, huh?
Yeah. Tom, do you have any thoughts on that?
You guys still awake?
Well, I haven't responded at all when they have...
Okay. No, I'm not enthused. Sorry. I mean, I like the idea, but, you know, last-minute changes is really tough for me.
Well, you know, in my mind, this is our opportunity to look at it and look at it critically. And I understand staff has been working hard, and Pixar has been working with staff and trying to resolve issues that have been raised, but that is one of the issues that staff has, has expressed.
Yeah. The problem I have with that is that, you know, with the fence issue, and it's coming up again, what we talked about this at length, about the fence, and then there was the seven-foot Hollis Street, or...
Seven-and-a-half-foot frontage.
Frontage with the trees and everything else, and really a serious attempt, number one. Number two, I think the massing of the buildings against the fence really create a nice contrast, personally. And number three, they have a right for security. I mean, they have a lot of value in, in both plant and intellectual property that they have to, have to deal with. So, you know, I'm, I'm really loath to, to force the hand on any of this. I, I would imagine that if, if they can, you know, I'd like to see this, but I, I really, it'd be hard for me to put this in a, in a condition.
And you know, and we went through this before we approved their project on the first go-around, I mean, about the security fence. It just went on and on and on and on, and we finally realized that they needed to have the security by having the fence, and we finally gave up on that. And, and I just don't think that we should revisit it now, just because they are building some more buildings. I mean, either they are having a fence or they're not having a fence. So I think we ought to just, just leave it. The other issue with your, you know, the gateway corner, you know, which...
At Hollis and Park.
...by issue.
Yeah. Which, which is, we all have our gateway of choice, which is something, you know, they, we had asked them about, and they had looked at it, and they are not able to do it because of all the equipment that's on that corner. But instead of that, they are giving us the entire strip, all the way down Hollis to 45th Street. You know, a little mini park all the way down, which is a lot more than just having something on the corner, I think. And I thought that that was a great compromise on their behalf to do that. And so I think that that, we ought to let that corner go, too. Maybe we can put a statue of you on there.
Not me. Public art.
Nora, yeah, do some, a piece of public art. I...
We're reaching the green...
I just think we're done, yes. Yeah.
Almost. So you, Chris, you raised the last...
The corner issue, yes.
Point of issue, and that is the Hollis Street frontage. And I realize that perhaps the commission looked at this issue when you first approved the Pixar application. I wasn't part of the commission then, and I've heard lots of very loud criticism about the fence and the separation. And what I'm trying to do is address that a little bit. I'm not suggesting that Pixar take the fence down for security purposes. What I'm trying to do is get these buildings to literally touch the sidewalk a little bit, so there's, there's a sense as you move around the building and the complex that it is, does have an impression of accessibility. And I think that can be achieved with some minimum windows and where we can take the fence down to provide that as well. And that goes to the Phase 2 improvements. And rather than make them as, as recommendations to the council, what I was hoping to do was actually get them into the PDP. And that's the first paragraph there. What I'm suggesting, if you look at the Hollis Street frontage, and again, I'm, I'm trying to respect the issue of security, but I see a very simple solution. If you look at the Hollis Street frontage and the elevation difference between the sidewalk here on Hollis and the first set of windows in the program space, we've got at least 10 feet, if not 15 feet in some spaces. I, I do not believe these will be operable windows, so there's no potential for anything coming out or going into those windows. There's no potential for anyone using the space to peer into the windows. And it just seems as a, you know, a simple solution to take that fence down along that frontage. And if it's possible when the Hollis Building goes in, do the same thing up at that corner. There was a great photo montage that vaguely gives us a sense of what that fence is going to do. This is looking south on Hollis at 45th Street, and this is what's called a Hollis Building. There's a, there's an interruption in the frontage for anybody moving down that sidewalk, and we've got that space between the building, the separation with the windows, and all that landscape potential that you don't feel when you go down there. We're losing all those access points at Semi-Freddy's, Bisco, that we're losing the last draw to this part of Hollis Street in pedestrian activity. And in my mind, one way to address that loss is to try to get that fence out of there. And I'm not sure whether it's completely feasible, because we don't know where the elevation grades are going to go in the Phase 3 building, and that's why I've worded the language the way I did, if it is in fact feasible for the Phase, for the Phase 3 or Phase 4 building at Hollis, at the Hollis Building. But it's clearly achievable at this frontage to the Phase 2 building. If you look carefully at the tentative map, there are actually exits. One of the things we requested was some ground floor activity and use at that corner, and we requested that they look very carefully at the relationship of this building to City Hall, the most important building in my mind in Emeryville. And instead of developing a visual relationship to City Hall and an attempt at symmetry, what they did is, and I think respectfully, decided not to mimic that relationship and leave it very subtle. But I, my last suggestion, in addition to taking the fence down, it's sort of a phased approach, is to providing some type of accessible use on the ground level. They've got a basement there. I've specified a minimum 1,000 square feet for PR community use. I think it could be easily accommodated, maybe some windows that are consistent with this vertical pattern. 1,000 square feet would be, let's say, 20 feet back from the corner of the building and 50 feet from the edge. I know a lot of people that want to get into Pixar and find out about Pixar, and they're not members of the chamber. They may be less engaged in the school community than a lot of us, but they want to get in there. They want to find out about you, and your current facility doesn't allow that. And I, I realize the security concerns you have. What I've suggested in my language is that this be a completely separate space, so there's no potential for compromise of that security, and allow it to become a multi-use function there. People who want to get into Pixar and find out, I now see people taking photographs in front of your entrance sign, and I think people will go there and they will use the space.
And do what?
If it's, if it's an opportunity to find out about Pixar, they will visit it. I'd like to, I deliberately left the suggested use open, because I think there are a lot of things that could go in there that could complement what happens at City Hall. Pixar has a lot of great artists. When we visit, I've visited the mezzanine there, they've got great art there. It could be a very simple gallery space. My hope is that we just get some physical pedestrian activity at that corner. If we're not going to emphasize it, my hope is that we don't completely lose the pedestrian activity along Hollis and access, and access opportunities into the complex.
I like the ideas, but I, there's no way I could support it as being any kind of requirement. Tom, you...
I'd like to speak. Jim, I'm respectful of your opinions, but in, this is one case where I, I can't agree to this. I don't set the security policy at Pixar. Pixar is very concerned. We've always been concerned about our, our, our security, and when we came to Emeryville, it was a condition of us moving to Emeryville to have our fence. And I think I have adequately demonstrated, all the times I've been up here, why we need it and what it's for. And I know that I have a lot of support in this community for our fence now. Maybe people don't like it, but they understand it now. I've invited people to come into our, inside our fence and look at it from our point of view, and since 9/11, people do understand why we need it. I can't have somebody drive up with a bomb right up next to our, our building, and we, I cannot accept this. Pixar will never agree to this. So I'm sorry. We, we are, we have worked with Charlie, we've given you guys a lot of things on this plan. We, the, the setback on Hollis Street is, is, is going to be really nice. The, the linear park, the bike path is going to be great. We're going to build beautiful buildings. This is above and beyond anything that I can accept, and I just urge you to please vote on this now, vote on what we've already agreed on, what I've already shown you here today, because this is just not something that's acceptable, Jim.
I do have a question about the parking structure. I understand your response to the Hollis Street frontage and the, the major changes that I've suggested for the Phase 2 building and for the, you know, the potential for the Hollis Building as well. Your eventual parking garage design has a great system with no fence on the east side of that building with unballed access to the Longs Drugs Building. Are you less concerned about the parking structure? Why haven't you provided that continuous security fencing around that structure?
Well, we could put that fence in. Right now, we're showing the maximum-sized garage that we would think we need to build, but if that garage needed to be smaller and we wanted to set it back, we still could put the fence there. But in order to provide what we think is the right amount of parking and to give the city that extra 20 feet that we originally weren't going to give, we had to make sure that on our plan, we showed the maximum-sized garage that we're capa- that on our plan, we showed the maximum-sized garage that we're capable of building. That's why it's showing it on the lot line. It wasn't necessarily our choice to not put the fence there. But that's the way we have to present it, because we don't know in the end if that's how big the garage will be. But I can't agree to put, to take the fence down on 45th Street. I don't know what that's going to be on that edge. And I don't think it's fair to ask us to take down our fence even along that stretch.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. I'm ready to make the motion.
That was a good try. No, I actually like some assistance from Charlie to get through. We have two resolutions here, and I'd like to know whether we need to make separate motions for each of the...
Yes, you do. Yes, we would like you to make one motion, or take one vote on the mitigated negative declaration, and then vote on the, your recommendations to council on the various project approvals. And at that point, on that second resolution, we would like to kind of summarize some modifications to the conditions.
Please.
That staff is recommending. I think Charlie can summarize, well, actually, you should summarize it now.
We could do that right now, if you want.
Right?
Well, can we do?
Let's do the negative.
Can we do the negative?
Well, I think you should know what the modifications are to conditional use before you do the neg deck. So, Charlie, go ahead and summarize.
Okay, this is basically from late-breaking correspondence from Pixar. Let me see. Page four, condition number, Roman numeral two, A2.
Are these in the conditions of approval, or the mitigated neg deck?
Conditions of approval. The public art program, we would stipulate that this applies to Phases Three and Four, because the requirement has already been met for Phase Two. On page 11, under public improvements, Roman numeral, it's late, IV, is that four or six? Four, thank you. For A2, little A, street improvements required for Phase Two construction shall include. We would like to modify A to say installation or modification, as appropriate, of curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and landscaping along the south side of 45th Street. That's because that curb is already there. But it will need to be modified to provide a curb cut for the bike path and some landscaping that is not there now, along the planter strip next to the street. So, that's just a little bit of clarification. And right below that little C, we would delete that and substitute in language, which we haven't written yet, but language to the effect that Pixar will instead give us a $50,000 in lieu fee to be used for pedestrian safety, instead of all these bulbouts along Park Avenue.
Is that, can I clarify? Does mitigation measure trans four stay? Is there a reference to that?
Yes, the mitigation measure stays.
This relates to the additional bulbouts on Emery, Harlan, and Haven.
There was an agreement with the commission that we eliminate, for this phase anyway, the bulbout on the south side of Park. I thought we all agreed that that made sense, mitigation measure. That it's going to change the significance level, but it just, in terms of design and the querying issue and problem, I thought there was agreement that it made sense.
That's not the recommendation of your staff at this stage, to significantly modify a mitigation measure at this point.
Well, the question is whether it's significant. And in my mind, there are two issues. One is querying, and the problem with querying, how to resolve and address that. The other is pedestrian safety. We're providing a stop sign at each of those corners.
Then you do, there will be findings that the lead agency, in this case, it's the council, but we would then also recommend that the, that you provide a recommendation that the, if you're going to do that as a body, that in essence, this revised mitigation measure is essentially an enhancement to the existing. And then I forget the other, there's a second finding.
That it will not cause a significant effect. I may interject for a moment. I thought it came out on the record, but perhaps it wasn't clear. In terms of the queuing problem, from, that there was concern raised, the bulbout are not going to go out any further than the parking currently does. So, to the extent that existing parking creates a queuing problem, the bulbout will not contribute to that at all. It's, and it's, they're not going to be designed past the current parking lines. So, to the extent that there's a queuing issue, I think it's only at special events that it's been occasional, and we have the mitigation where they can go on the 45th Street side. But the bulbout is not expected to create any additional impacts, because it's not really going to, it's going to create a better pedestrian environment, but it's not really going to alter vehicular traffic at all on Park.
Is that fine with Pixar? Okay. Well, there is, I mean, the mitigation measures do call, if there's a problem, it has to be resolved somehow. And in my mind, it was just a simple solution of addressing the analysis in the initial study. The initial study clearly pointed out that there was a potential for a querying problem on the left-turn northbound movement for eastbound traffic. And it was specifically stated that it was because of the bulbout at that intersection that there'd no longer be an opportunity to move around those left-turn vehicles waiting to turn into Pixar.
But I believe, is Rob still here?
Yes.
If, Rob can obviously speak for himself, but I thought he was suggesting that you can design it in a manner that you retain the bulbout, but it still can be designed in a fashion that allows cars to pass in the event there is queuing. And that can be refined in the actual design of the bulbout without removing it.
Why is there a mitigation that says that there's a problem?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could clarify this, that would be useful.
I didn't ever saw anything that said that.
Excuse me, Jim, could you clarify where? I'm wondering if this was in response to comments. It's in the traffic.
We're having trouble locating where it says that the bulbouts would cause a queuing problem.
In the transportation discussion. Maybe Rob knows off the top of his head.
In the mitigated neg deck itself, or in the...
In the mitigated neg deck.
Where's it located?
It's on page 89. In the middle of page 89.
Oh, there it is.
If you look in the 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph, it says, "Vehicle queries have been observed on Park Avenue as vehicles wait to turn left into the Pixar campus. These queries occur as right-turning vehicles into Pixar." The Pixar site has the right-of-way over left-turning traffic. "Through traffic on Park Avenue currently may bypass the vehicle queries as there is sufficient roadway width to allow this maneuver. With the installation of extensions at this intersection, insufficient roadway width would remain to allow this maneuver." In my mind, it's just a very simple solution, and I'm not sure why this is, I thought the commission went through this, and it made sense. And we even suggested specific language changes that could maybe be made in the condition of approval, rather than...
You were confused in terms of what you were presenting.
Did you guys speak into the mic? Sorry.
Thanks.
Were we confused in terms of what you were presenting? Because it looked like it was the bulbout that was the issue there.
The, you're interpreting the text correctly. What I tried to say earlier, when I was speaking here previously, is that there are different ways to design the bulbouts. You can design them to come out beyond the parking and narrow down the lanes. You can design them to be aligned with the parking, so the lanes are not narrowed. You can design them with very small turning radii, so it's very difficult to make a right turn. You can design them with a larger radii, so it's easier to make a right turn. And what I, I don't know if I mentioned this or not, but it was my intent to bring some different examples of how you might construct bulbouts there, to have these different characteristics, so you could see what would happen if there was a situation where you had congestion and the vehicle could not bypass a delayed...
I guess we'd just like to know, is there a way to design a bulbout that still allows for the eastbound querying?
Yes, there is a way to design a bulbout so that the vehicle that is waiting to turn left, another vehicle can pass on the right and continue through.
And you...
One issue that I just want to make clear is that we're proposing an always-stop, however. So, there is no reason to have a bypass lane, because no vehicles would be delayed.
Well, it depends on the delay in the querying into the left-turn movement.
You have five people turning to the left, I mean...
And you want that single car to go through, then yes, it would be good to have two lanes there. Park Avenue is wide enough to be able to have multiple lanes and still have bulbouts. And so, that's what I was proposing, was to bring different concepts. I guess maybe one solution here is that you can provide direction, that you want the bulbouts to be designed such that cars can bypass another vehicle.
That's what we were trying to accomplish.
You've got that?
I mean, that seems fair.
Yeah. The mitigation measure refers to a concept that's illustrated in Figure 15 in the MND. I just want to make sure whether the mitigation measure changes, whether the condition of approval changes, that we just don't have the querying problem. If you can design that, and the mitigation measure can stand as is, I don't have a problem with it.
Can be designed.
Okay.
Well, good.
Maybe you can add some language to the conditions?
It'd be a good spot.
With the section on the bulbouts, we could...
Okay, well, maybe in that same condition, or that series of conditions on street improvements, we will include that the bulbouts will be designed to allow passing of cars.
Or to say that they won't extend beyond the, beyond a park car, you know, about that distance. With the radii of a large pizza pie, so make an easy right turn.
I don't think any pizza places are open anymore.
I wish that a farm was open.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. Next modification, and I think the last one. No? Right, yes. Page 19, Roman numeral 7A1, elevations, colors, materials, site plan. To the end of the first sentence, we would add, "To ensure consistency with the approved FDP of the relevant phase." Just to clarify that that's what we're looking at. That's understood, but Pixar would like it made explicit. Now, I also, excuse me? I also have a note on this page about the 20 percent window openings on the street elevations. That was something that you had wanted to add, I think.
Yes. There were three of us that were supportive of the change.
Were there?
Yeah. Three, not four.
I understand. I know the difference between three and two. Yeah. Well...
I believe those are the changes that we would like to recommend.
And then, if I may clarify, I think that the only change that I understand to the mitigation measures is with, based on the changes being made to the conditions of approval, is that mitigation measure trans nine, you wanted the language added except as provided for in trans eight. And I think that's simply a clarification of the existing measures, and I don't believe that requires any additional findings.
And then this, the, in trans 11, the reference to requiring parking spaces, adequate parking spaces at each phase in that, the construction phasing and management plan. I think there was an agreement there that that made sense.
The conditions of approval.
Well, yeah. In the last bullet.
Well, during...
Again, I think there are some conditions of approval where you can address that concern.
It's actually the beginning of the mitigation measure.
It does speak to it as well.
Yeah.
Of trans 11?
Yes. It talks about the construction phasing and management plan for each project phase, which means we would have to demonstrate that for each phase.
So that you always have the required parking, no matter what you're constructing?
Yes.
No, the point that was raised in one of the comment letters was with regard to required parking, and that was the only insert that I had made there, is that you're going to achieve your required parking for each phase, which isn't specified in the actual mitigation measure.
Well, it is included, I know you have to kind of read in several different places here to put this together, but it is included in the conditions of approval. Page 18, Roman numeral 6, A, parking. And it just, it simply lists the minimum number of spaces that must be provided in each phase.
And that's in the conditions? Okay.
Yes.
That's fine.
Are we done? Are we done?
So...
Charlie, are we done now?
Did you have anything else to add, Carol?
I don't have anything else to add. Right? Okay. Okay.
So, we have two resolutions before us. We need to make motions and vote on each resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
I move that we recommend to the, that the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the Pixar headquarters' expansion project.
Second.
Ready to vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin?
Aye.
Five ayes, the motion is approved.
Do you want to move it? No, you do it again. You're just so nice to this old woman, I swear. I like it. Okay. I move the resolution of the planning commission to recommend to the city council that it approve the general plan amendments, an amendment to the Emeryville Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, an amendment of the preliminary development plan, rezoning the 4240 Hollis Street property, and an amendment to the building heights map, an amended and restated development agreement, and an amended and restated participation agreement, vacation of the Emery Street right-of-way between 45th and Park, and a tentative subdivision map, all relating to the Pixar headquarters' expansion project.
I second.
On the motion, Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin?
I'm actually going to vote no. I raised specific concerns that I don't believe have been addressed sufficiently, in my mind, including design issues. I really support Pixar. I think you guys are an important part of our community. I know my vote doesn't influence the decision here of the commission, but I'd at least like the council to hopefully have attention to some of the issues that I raised when they consider this. But I want to thank you for all the work you've done and the cooperation you've shown with staff.
Vice Chair Martin? Before we adjourn, I'd like to make an announcement. The public hearing on this item at the city council is scheduled for May 18th, and I hope there's still somebody left who's watching this on TV, or certainly when it's rebroadcast, this will be heard. The notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration mistakenly said that the council hearing would be May 4th. That is not correct. The council hearing will be on May 18th.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner comments at 1:07 AM.
God, I wish that pub were open now.
Seeing none, we'll close the commission meeting.
It's a church.
Marty, this was one of the longest.